Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of September 21st, 2020. I'm going to call us to order, and as always, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Member Papin.
Here.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Gothel.
Here. and we are going to start with our ceremonial item, starting with Cut the Commute Pledge from commute.org, and I'd like to welcome in John Ford, Executive Director. Welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to join you this evening. The silver lining that's come from this COVID-19 situation has been that many organizations and businesses and municipalities have learned that being able to do telework and remote work is something that they never thought they could actually embrace and prosper doing. And we've really learned that that is possible. So commute.org is working in coordination with the Bay Area Air Quality Management District and their Spare the Air team to promote the Cut the Commute Pledge. And the concept is that we're looking for businesses and organizations, municipalities, to sign a pledge that says that for those employees where remote work is an option, where it's flexible, the flexibility exists for those employees, that they try to commit to a 25% engagement of telework for those employees, or possibly one to two days a week, in a hybrid mode, once we come out of the pandemic. We recognize that there are lots and lots of employees in businesses around the county that won't be able to do telework. And that's, this pledge is not really meant to ask people to do more than what they've already been doing during this pandemic. And as a result of that, we think that more and more people will be able to enjoy the benefits of that, working remotely, and at the same time reducing traffic congestion, improving air quality, all around the Bay Area as a result of it. The pledge is up on the commute.org website, it's also on the air district's website. It's something that our organization, Councilmember Bonilla was a part of our board adopting this measure. We encourage San Mateo to consider it, perhaps at a future meeting, and it's something we'll be taking throughout the rest of the county, encouraging, again, businesses, organizations, and municipalities to join us in cutting the commute and take the telework pledge. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for those comments. It's incumbent on all of us to do our part in order to save the environment, but when you see less traffic on the road, everybody is spending less time on the road. It's congestion that really increases the amount of time that we're out there. So your comments are just spot on, and thank you for the challenge. Thank you for inspiring all of us.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Our next ceremonial item is a proclamation recognizing National Emergency Preparedness Month. Whereas the U.S. Department of Homeland Security first sponsored National Emergency Preparedness Month in 2004 as a nationwide effort to increase personal preparedness for emergencies and large-scale disasters in local communities, whereas National Preparedness Month provides an opportunity to remind us that we all must prepare ourselves and our families now and throughout the year, and focus on planning with an overarching theme: disasters don't wait. Make your plan today. Whereas the City of San Mateo and its residents have demonstrated resilience through several emergencies this year, such as responding to a global pandemic, heat waves, power outages, and wildfires resulting in poor air quality, and shown that they prioritize preparedness. And whereas the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department offers free training via the Community Emergency Response Training, CERT, program, to educate the ever-growing number of both citizens and people working in the City of San Mateo to become more prepared for emergencies. And whereas ongoing emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen and civic organization, and as such, all citizens and civic organizations are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas the City of San Mateo is furthering preparedness efforts by supporting the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department's effort to increase engagement of our multilingual community through free public education courses offered in multiple languages. And whereas National Emergency Preparedness Month is also an opportunity to pay tribute to America's first responders who put themselves at risk for the safety of their fellow citizens. Now, therefore, I, Joe Gothel, Mayor of the City of San Mateo, and on behalf of the City Council hereby proclaim September 2020 as National Emergency Preparedness Month in the City of San Mateo, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to evaluate and update their plans for a large-scale emergency and its aftermath. Dated September 21st, Joe Gothel, Mayor of the City of San Mateo. Today is one of those days when we have a perfect example of why it's important to be prepared for emergencies. There is actually a wildfire going on as we speak in one of the canyons right adjoining San Mateo in Belmont. And because of that, Janelle Masterson is unavailable to accept the proclamation tonight, and I would like to read the comments that she had prepared in order to accept this proclamation. Thank you to the mayor and city council for recognizing National Preparedness Month. Many people have been using the term unprecedented to describe the events that have occurred over the last six months in our community and throughout our country. Of course, the pandemic has had the largest impact on our daily lives, but our events, but other events, including the recent CZU lightning complex fire, poor air quality, heat waves, and power outages have complicated our lives even more. We recognize that the impacts of these disasters are overwhelming for so many members of our community, and this is why National Preparedness Month and this year's theme, disasters don't wait, make your plan today, is especially important right now. We believe that preparedness starts at home, and the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department has many opportunities for San Mateo community members to access preparedness information and learn life-saving skills. Many resources are on our website at smcfire.org/NPM, where you can see preparedness information and take our preparedness survey, and be entered to win a free personal preparedness kit. We are thrilled that our first hybrid online CERT course, CERT series, which began on September 9th, has 130 students enrolled. This class was modified to be taken at once leisure with an online course developed by the University of Utah, and live office hours to localize information. We also held an online get-ready two-hour disaster preparedness class last Thursday, which can be viewed online on SMC Fire's YouTube page. I'd like to share in a moment of gratitude for our SMCFD CERT members. Since April, we have had 80 volunteers provide 1,250 hours of service to our community in a number of ways, including through donations management, delivering senior lunches, and supporting county and statewide efforts through the pandemic and recent evacuations. Some of our donations included hand sanitizers, donations, social bridging, the evac center, senior lunch, door knockers. We continue to enrich our CERT members by offering additional volunteer leadership opportunities and monthly continuing ad for existing CERT members even during the pandemic. Now, I'd like to acknowledge our SMCFD OES team members, Sandra Furpo and Casey Treadway, for delivering our public education and preparedness programs and supporting our Emergency Operations Center activation this year. It is also important to recognize the San Mateo city leadership and staff for all of the work that they have done for our community while we cope with this pandemic. And I know that they have been able to step up and do the essential work because they have diligently prepared and trained for a disaster response. Finally, I want to recognize all of our first responders for the role they have played in keeping us safe, especially those who have deployed in our county and throughout our state to assist with evacuations, and especially the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department crews who are still tirelessly fighting wildfires. Thank you all for the hard, selfless, and exhausting work that you do. Again, I am honored to serve the City of San Mateo and accept this proclamation today, and thank you for making preparedness a priority in San Mateo, and I look forward to continuing to enhance the community's level of preparedness this year. Janelle Masterson serves San Mateo and all of its residents very well, and she continues to do so tonight as we seek to put out the wildfire in the canyons just to the south of San Mateo. So thank you very much for that, and we appreciate celebrating National Preparedness Month, Emergency Preparedness Month. Our last proclamation for this month is for Constitution Week. Our constitution was adopted during this week, a long time ago. Whereas the Constitution and its first 10 amendments, the great American Charter of personal liberty and human dignity, are fundamental to the lives of all Americans. And whereas it is fitting, its adoption should be remembered, for we all have enjoyed the immeasurable privileges which that charter guaranteed, the privileges of freedom of religion, freedom of speech, freedom of the press, freedom of assembly, and the free right to petition the government for redress of grievances. And whereas it is especially fitting that this anniversary should be remembered and observed by those institutions of a democratic people, which owe their very existence to the guarantees of the Bill of Rights, the free schools, the free churches, the labor unions, the religious and educational and civic organizations of all kinds, which without the guarantee of the Bill of Rights could never have existed, which sicken and disappear whenever in any country these rights are curtailed or withdrawn. And whereas it is therefore appropriate that we set apart as a day of mobilization for freedom and for human rights, a day of remembrance of the democratic and peaceful action by which these rights were gained, a day of reassessment of their present meaning and their living worth. And whereas those who have long enjoyed such privileges as we enjoy forget in time that men have died to win them. They come in time to take these rights for granted and to assume their protection is assured. We, however, who have seen these privileges lost in other continents and other countries, can now appreciate their meaning to those people who enjoyed them once and now no longer can. We understand in some measure what their loss can mean, and by that realization, we have come to a clearer conception of their worth to us, and to a stronger and more unalterable determination that here in our land, they shall not be lost or weakened or curtailed. And whereas it is to give public expression and outward form to that understanding, that determination, that we are about to commemorate the adoption of the Constitution and Bill of Rights and rededicate its principles and its practices. Now, therefore, I, Joe Gothel, Mayor of San Mateo, hereby recognize the week of September 20th through September 26th, 2020, as Constitution Week, dated this September 21st, 2020, Joe Gothel's mayor. I would be remiss if I did not mention at this time that we lost a Titan. We lost a Supreme Court Justice like no other, Ruth Bader Ginsburg, and we are all feeling that loss. And at the end of this meeting, we will adjourn with a moment of silence in her honor. But it is Constitution Week, and we should celebrate her life as well. Her life was one of protecting the rights that we need to so preciously preserve. With that, with that, I will turn to our agenda, and I would ask the clerk to read the consent calendar.
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, then that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number four, city council mini-minute approval. Item number five, safe gun storage ordinance adoption. Item number six, Burrell Park improvements informal pre-application process exemption. Item number seven, age-friendly cities application approval. Item number eight, street rehabilitation package 1C amendment. Item number nine, 28th Avenue Bicycle Boulevard project agreement. Item number 10, city hall restroom remodel change order number one. Item number 11, on-call private development services amendment has been requested by staff to be removed and considered at the end. Item number 12, Office of Traffic Safety Grant Spending Plan. Item number 13, Edward Byrne 2020 Justice Assistance Grant Program Application. Item number 14, radio system maintenance agreement. Item number 15, San Mateo Management Employees Association Memorandum of Understanding Amendment.
Thank you for reading the titles.
I'll move to adopt the consent calendar minus the one item which was, which one was it, item 10 or 9?
Number 11, please.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar all but item 11.
Your motion is second.
Please call roll.
Councilmember Papin.
Aye.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Gothel.
Aye. And that passes unanimously, all items except for item 11, and that includes age-friendly cities, which we are proud to be seeking their partnership, and for San Mateo to be an age-friendly city, and perhaps we'll have more comments on that later on. At this time, we are taking public comment for all those items that are not on the agenda. Anyone seeking to?
Is item, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, is item number 11 polled, or was staff going to mention what they're going to do with that?
We were going to pull this off the agenda and bring it forward at a future council meeting. We need, it needs further analysis.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I appreciate that.
Any member of the public seeking to make public comment at this time may do so. Public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes and three minutes for each person. I see that we have many people, and several people would like to speak during this time. We're going to start with Rich Hedges. Go ahead, Rich.
Good evening.
Rich, if that's for me, take a message.
No, unfortunately, it's the only thing I can't shut down. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit tonight about our financial condition. I understand we're going to have on the ballot Measure W, which will increase the tax on hotel occupants. It's a small increase in that tax. It will not affect our local city residents. The city has done a great job with creating reserves. The pandemic has cut a hole in those reserves and will force us to cut services to our citizens if we don't take action. The city is financially well-run, but we need financial help for our police, fire, and other services. Measure W will be just one component of our overall physical stabilization plan. It will not tax our citizens, as I've said. It will be a small increase for those visitors that come to San Mateo. Those visitors use city services when they come to the city, and they will simply be helping us to pay for them. There are many challenges our city has. An example would be some of the things that have been going on with burglaries of automobiles, but The Chronicle on Sunday had an article that burglaries have gone up more than 50% in some neighborhoods, and they're not small burglaries. And we all know what happens in the city eventually flows toward us. So hopefully, we can get the revenue to keep our police and fire staff, and as we can see now, the need for it with the fire that's going on between San Mateo and Belmont. I urge every one of the city council members to vote yes on W, and I'm urging our other citizens to vote yes on it. We need the small amount of funding that will help to glue our whole strategy together to save city services. Thank you.
That was from our elder statesman from San Mateo, Rich Hedges. Thank you for that public comment. Next, we're going to go to Eric Kristin.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to confirm, I'm speaking to item 16. Should I wait for that item under Old Business?
Yes, please. We're just going to take comments for items that are not on the agenda, but we will, we will keep you in mind when we are on that item. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, seeing no other public comment, we will close the public comment period and move on to Old Business, item number 16, wastewater treatment plant. Azalea, are you giving the presentation?
Yes.
Excellent, welcome.
Thank you. Just checking, can you see the screen?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm here, Azalea Mitch, Deputy Public Works Director, and I'm here to present to you on the third package for the wastewater treatment plant and upgrade and expansion project. On the agenda tonight is the, I'll review with you some of the construction that we've made already on Packages 1 and 2. I'll provide a summary of the effort that we underwent on finalizing the design for Package 3, on the cost negotiations and reaching that final price. I'll speak to the impacts to the budget and provide the recommendations. So you know the site very well. We've made a lot of progress. Construction started the work back in May 2019. The scope involved the shoring system, the excavation, tiebacks, some demolition on the existing treatment plant site, and electrical work. We are on track to complete this work by the end of this year. Phase 2 was an $18 million effort. We awarded this back in May of this year. The progress here has gone rather well. We have more than 1,900 piles to drive. The contractor has already driven around 650 of them, so the production rate has gone rather well. We were rather concerned about the noise that the pile driving would generate, but we have found that the noise actually attenuates, and so we've been very happy that the community hasn't been as impacted as we had anticipated. We are continuing to monitor the noise, the vibration, and the groundwater, and we are on track to complete this work by January of 2022. So if you haven't been to the site lately, it's, the whole process has been really neat to watch. You can also go online, and we've got two video cameras, so you can log on anytime. So for, as we started the construction on Packages 1 and 2, we worked with the designer, HDR, to finalize the third package, and this is the, this is the large one. This involves all the structural, mechanical, electrical, and yard piping, and it will result in commissioning the new facility. So this is a four-year effort, and we're hoping that with your support, they can start construction on this third package tomorrow. So as you may remember, back in late 2018, we actually did a redesign on the plant. The aim there was to reduce the cost. We made the facility smaller. We were able to design to redesign the biological process as well as the wet weather system so that it reduced the footprint and made the design less complicated. We were able to move the administration building right next to the main structure and reduce the overall footprint excavation and number of piles. We final, HDR finalized this effort in March of this year. So Sunt, once the design was close to being finalized, Sunt Construction bid the work in 50 trade scopes. We were able to reach more than 80 contractors. The Sunt received 89 proposals. Everything was competitively bid, except for the electrical work. This proved to be much more challenging, given the complexity and the size of that scope. So we agreed to do a direct selection. That was based on requests for proposals, and we ended up selecting based on interest and qualifications. Once we had the first price, we embarked on a rather comprehensive review with Sunt. This involved many, many meetings. The first step was to align the scope to make sure that the contractors were bidding on the correct scope. We reconciled the, every line item. We embarked on, you know, many meetings that got rather intense with the contractor, trying to really reach a fair price. We also took that opportunity to identify things that we could value-engineer further to reduce costs. Unfortunately, the market conditions have proven to be rather challenging, challenging for us to track. The competition in the Bay Area has been intense. A lot of, a lot of contractors have seen a backlog. So we, we, we were not able to see the competition that we had hoped for. The nature of the work is also rather special. The wastewater business is different than commercial building, so we saw some challenges associated with that, as well as an increase in material costs and labor costs. So after five months, five long months of many hours, going line by line, looking, reviewing bids, challenging costs, we were able to achieve a $31 million cost reduction. So back in March, Sunt had proposed a cost of $411 million, but through the five months of negotiations, we were able to reach a final price of around $380,000. So that is for the third phase. Looking at the entire project as a whole, including Packages 1, 2, and 3, the contract value is at $431 million. We have, we have had smaller contingencies as part of Packages 1 and 2. The third package, we are requesting the authorization for close to $14 million in contingency. So that puts us, if I can get my view, right, that puts us over budget. We do have enough funds in pack in the wastewater upgrade budget to award the third phase. However, when we look at all the costs associated with the design, the permitting, we also have construction that, for example, we have to work with Cal Water and construct a new line, a new potable water line to reach the facility. When we add all those costs up, we, we believe that we may be at a $17 million cost overrun on the treatment plant project itself. So back in 2017, that baseline budget was established at $533,000. We estimate that at complete will be at $550,000 with that $17 million cost variance. However, we've done a lot of work already to look at the projects that we have left as part of the program. If you may remember, the Clean Water Program as a whole has a budget of $991 million. So while we will be over budget on the treatment plant, we are working to reduce the scope of work on some of the projects that we had in the queue. We're reprioritizing, so we believe that as a, as a program, we'll be within that, that. We're reprioritizing, so we believe that as a, as a program, will be within that budget. So we'll be coming back to you to rebaseline this once we have all the soft costs finalized. Would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge some of the key team members on this project. It honestly has been many, many, many days, many months, many long hours, and it could not have happened without the help of Jennifer Phillips. She's been the project manager on Jacobs. She's worked with the designer and the contractor. You know, as the construction was, began, we were also finalizing that design, which took many, many hours of reviews and coordination. Her commitment has been exceptional, so very much appreciate her work. Chris Bessa, the construction manager lead, he's no longer with Jacobs. He left us a week ago, or he left the team a week ago, but he took the time to review every line item, and I do not believe that we would have been able to achieve the savings that we did without his help. Have to say that Rob Infantino, Vice President at Sunt, and Doug Lenz, who has been managing the construction project, have been very helpful. Sunt, we've had many meetings with them, many meetings with the subcontractor on the electrical side. Sunt reduced their fee, and we were able to move some of the items into allowances so that we can track the costs through this four-year effort. So with that, with that, we were asking, we're recommending that you approve the second amendment that we, that you, for the project at a maximum, guaranteed maximum price of $379, almost $380 million. I will note that any savings that this project does have will come back to the city. That is part of the construction management at risk contract that we have with Sunt. So we will be tracking those costs rather closely. We're recommending that you approve a contingency in the amount of $13 million, $900,000, and that you authorize the Public Works Director to execute the amendment for any change orders and for use of that contingency. With that, I thank you for your time, and we'll take any questions.
Questions from the council? Councilmember Pappan?
Just one quick one. Did I hear you say that you did not use the contingencies for the first two packages?
We have. So the contingencies are much smaller. So if I go back to the, we have some savings. So for package one, it was 1.7, package two, 1.6. So we do have some contingency savings that will be carried through. But we did use some of the contingency. And the projects, the packages one and two are not quite done.
And the one on package one was a pretty small contingency too compared to the contract, right?
Yes, and that's where we had the excav, mass excavation. So we had to track contaminated soils and dispose of them accordingly. But we do have some small savings, we anticipate small savings from those two packages that we will carry through.
Okay. That was all I had.
Other questions? Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Azalea. I was wondering if you could speak to, you know, where we are with the, you know, with the WIFI loans, and what is the, what is the impact to our ratepayers if we aren't able to find the $17 million in other savings on the other side of the project?
So we have already, on the program as a whole, we have actually already eliminated, made the decision to eliminate a $20 million pilot study that had been, you know, we have that sort of in the queue, but we, we reevaluated the value there. So we've already eliminated $20 million worth of work that we had planned, that we do not believe we need. We're also reevaluating some of the other construction projects, making them smaller, perhaps more competitive, to gain some efficiencies there. So I don't anticipate us, we're trying very hard not to go over that whole program budget of 991. So we don't anticipate that this will have an impact on, on having us to make up for it through sewer rates. And then in terms of the WIFI loan, so we have a rating presentation. We're going through the credit rating process this week, and we have draft terms in place with EPA. We're hoping to close that loan in the next 60 days.
Thank you. That's exciting.
Yes.
Okay, seeing no other questions, I'll go to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Going first to Eric Kristin.
Thank you, councilmembers. I was touched by the recognition of the Constitution at the beginning of the meeting. That was well done, and thank you for taking time to do that. My name's Eric Kristin. I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction, where a statewide organization was formed 22 years ago by union and non-union members and contractors who opposed the discrimination inherent in project labor agreements and the waste bound within them. Speaking to the Constitution, unfortunately, what you did by placing a project labor agreement on this is you artificially reduced the number of people who'd be interested in bidding your project. There were six of my members who would have bid your project, including four of the largest electrical subcontractors in the state, who simply did not because the PLA precludes them from being able to do so. We warned you that this would happen, and now you're suffering the consequences thereof. Why does it preclude our contractors, who are some of the largest in the country, from being able to do it? Every non-union worker would have to pay into a union pension plan they'll never best in. That's wage theft. That is what a project labor agreement does. Helix Electric, 2,000-man shop, would suddenly not be able to pay their workers money into their pension plan. It would have to go into the union pension plan. Suddenly, that money is lost to those workers. It's right in your project labor agreement. So what happens? You get the results that you now have. We warned you, now you're suffering from them. So it's one thing to talk about the Constitution, but it's one thing to implicitly and explicitly discriminate against the very men and women that you purport to support with the Bill of Rights and the Constitution vis a vis a project labor agreement. I understand that project labor agreements are a political issue, but at some point on a project this large, while you're already talking about a $17 million deficit, you had one electrical subcontractor bid your work, one. Why? Ask Sunt, they will tell you, the big non-union electrical subcontractor simply did not bid. They would have. I talked to them. They would do it again. You could consider that. You would see the results for yourself. That would be the reality. Having a, paying off big labor special interests might be politically savvy, but it certainly is going to cost you, and it's going to cost your ratepayers. So these are the results. Please understand, we will be following this through its fruition. And as frustrating as it may be to hear these facts for certain council members, the reality is you're now suffering the results of a project labor agreement that eliminated electrical subcontractors from being able to bid your work to where you had one. And I have three of my members, again, three of the largest in the state of California, who simply didn't do it because they would not allow their workers to have money stolen from their paychecks. So thank you for your time and for listening to this. Sorry for this decision and that you're already suffering the consequences from it, but this is something that can be corrected, and have a, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us, and thank you for your comments. Any other public comment tonight on this item? Seeing no other hands, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the council for any further comments. Any comments from the council? Seeing, if not, I can entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, comments?
Please.
Yeah, I'd like to first thank and congratulate all of our staff, who worked really long and hard to get us to where we are today. This project is doing just fine despite that individual's misperceptions. We are on a path towards having a great project with Sunt's help, frankly. Sunt was commended and recognized by Azalea as she spoke. I think they're doing a good job for us, and they have done this kind of job for others before. I think that they may not have the same opinions that other gentlemen, though I'm not going to mention again. We don't need to worry about that. But I'm very proud of this project because it's the biggest infrastructure project San Mateo has ever had. That and all of his staff have worked hard. The other people Azalea mentioned worked extra hard to get us to where our budget is going to work, right? In the end, we're going to have something to be proud of. A great, clean, and well-functioning wastewater treatment plant. People forget how important that is. In the past, people died because water had human waste and lots of other things in it, okay? We are eliminating those problems. We're going to be one of the cleanest wastewater facilities in the Bay Area, which is why, part of the reason why the EPA recognized us and decided to offer us the WIFI loan. So thank you very much for your time, Mr. Mayor.
When I think about you, I think about infrastructure, Rick. And when I think about sewers, I think about sexy. And I don't know why that is, but I think it has something to do with last year.
What's up on this project, Mr. Mayor?
Just one final comment on this. Well, go ahead, Councilmember Pappan.
Well, no, I just, in reading the staff report preparing for tonight's meeting, it became very clear to me how much work really went into line by line, keeping us as close to budget as possible. I just, I got nothing to say other than thank you so much. Our ratepayers, you owe it to them, and I think you've done right by them, and I'm very grateful for the, albeit long, but successful negotiations. So kudos to Azalea and your staff. We're pleased.
And to any residents who are out there who question, you know, are we doing a great job? Look at your sewer bill and know that you have the most up-to-date, most state-of-the-art wastewater treatment plant and sewer system, and you're, for the same price, as Diane likes to say, no, not a penny more.
Yeah, yeah. And if I may, one more. I know another council member will speak. I agree with Councilmember Bonilla. This is one of the most important things a municipality does for its citizenry, and it is true that disease was caused by the failure to do this through the ages. So it's, it's import cannot be understated, and it's one of the biggest things. I'm so pleased that I get to serve on the council when this came about because it is one of the biggest things we will do and one of the most important things. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee?
I'll just pile on with the appreciation for, for staff seeing this through. You know, if you go to the wastewater treatment plant, the original building has two words on it. On the left side, it says sanitation. On the right side, it says civilization. And the point being that you, we cannot become, you, you do not evolve into a civilized society without sanitation. And throughout this pandemic, our essential workers, like Rusty Chaplin, like Mike Sutter, were there at the wastewater treatment plant every single day without fail. And, and so the fact that the city is investing in this project and giving our, not only our city, but our essential workers, a new place to work that we can all be proud of is an incredible accomplishment, and I am so proud of us today, and it's money well-spent.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to die if I don't get to make this motion, so please come back.
Okay, okay, okay. I will let you make the motion, and then the Beyonce of wastewater treatment plants would like to second that.
Thank you very much. Well, then, we have a motion, Mr. Mayor. And if you'll put the screen up, Azalea, please. That includes the different three things to approve.
That's all right. I take your motion to be that you want to approve Amendment Number Two to the agreement with the, with Sunt Construction for services to construct the third package of the wastewater treatment plant for guaranteed maximum price of $379,887,47. And approve a contingency reserve in the amount of $13,900,000, and authorize the Public Works Director to execute the amendment in substantially the form presented and issue change orders within the contingency amount. That is your motion, Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well said.
I'll second it.
And a second from Beyonce? So Madam Clerk, would you call?
Councilmember Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Goffel?
Yes, that passes unanimously. Excellent. Onto the next item.
Thank you.
Item number 17. Thank you, Azalea. Thank you. Solid Waste Update and Rate Notification. I have a feeling that we are going to Roxanne. And there she is.
Oh, you can see me? Okay.
Yes.
I'm going to try to do my best to get this power, can you, wait a second? Screen share?
Speaking of residents getting a good deal on their essential services.
Services that have not been interrupted once during COVID either, so I have to say that.
Amazing.
I'm, you have to, I'm a little challenged here, so give me a sec.
It takes a lot of slides in order to justify that no rate increase.
Uh-oh, I don't have that many. So I'll just see if I can get it here. I apologize for my.
No problem.
I lost my PowerPoint. I'm so sorry. Give me one sec. Uh-oh. Ah, here we go. Oh, I'm so sorry. I had it up the whole time, and Azalea's presentation was so great that I lost in my, in my thoughts here, so apologize. Here we go. So hopefully, go down here. Screen share. Now I lost you guys. Oh, can I, I'm just going to talk you through it, so. I don't know why I can't do this now. Can you see me? Okay, here we go. Screen share, PowerPoint presentation. Can you see it now?
No.
Okay. I'm starting to panic now.
What if you emailed it to somebody like that could put it up?
The problem that I have is, I can't now.
That's all right.
Well, anyway, to make it really fast, I had four total slides, so it was a pretty quick presentation. I don't know why I can't, I can see it and you can't. So I have it here. Let me try. Uh-huh. Yes, it is. Thank you.
Roxanne, is now a good time to remind us how solid waste rates work?
We do, we review them manually, and it covers the cost of collection, which is provided by Recology San Mateo County. It covers the cost of processing and disposal, which is provided at, takes place at the Shoreway Environmental Center, and it's provided by South Bay Recycling. Their contract is with the South Bayside Waste Management Authority, our JPA, which Councilmember Bonilla is one of our active members. It covers the city fees, which is our franchise fee, solid waste, the solid waste program for waste disposal and waste diversion from landfill.
We don't try to pad those rates so that we can take that money and spend it on other things around the city?
Not that I'm aware of, and no, we do not. I can assure you of that. It covers the cost of capital improvements regarding the municipal regional plan, which is not allowing any debris to go down a storm drain. And it covers the landfill closure maintenance and bond recoverance for the Ryder Park, where we now have a beautiful park, but we have to monitor the landfill that's underneath there. And it covers the rate stabilization fund, and that was established in 2018 by our council, proactively knowing that the solid waste rates, we're going to, we renegotiated the contract with Recology. It's a 15-year extension, and it begins next year, January 1st. And we knew there were a lot of true-up costs related to that, and those costs were associated with accounts, labor agreements. It's been reviewed by the South Bay, by the SBWMA, our Waste Authority, by the city staff and our consultant. There's a lot of one-time costs, but we knew that when that extension came about, there could be a possibility of a double-digit rate increase. So for the past two years, we've been establishing the rates to gradually increase to cover those costs. At the time, we had no idea of COVID that was coming, and businesses were going to be suffering, but we have, in 2018, we established the rate stabilization fund. With that fund included a cost of, in 2019, it was built into the rates, we have a million 300, a little bit over 300,000, a million 300,000 in that rate stabilization fund that's specific for. and that rate stabilization fund, that's specific for knowing that there could be a rate increase.
Yeah, so we don't hit people with like a double-digit rate increase next year? We can do it gradually?
Well, next year, we're hoping, what our goal is to go to you tonight to say we really recommend, knowing we have hardships, knowing there's financial costs to our residents, knowing we had this fund set aside to specifically offset any costs through this year, no increase in the rates for 2021. Keep them stable, keep them at the 2020 cost, knowing that we have this, we have reserves, and we have this rate stabilization built in specifically to offset any double-digit cost. But we're anticipating approximately maybe an $800,000 shortfall if revenues continue as they are coming in. We did see a huge decrease, a substantial decrease in revenue coming in when businesses closed or suspended their accounts when they weren't there. So, we anticipate it'd be right in the $800,000 mark, and we have the funds to cover that shortfall for this one year. Additionally, we know in 2022, we are looking at how to better charge for our cost of services and how to make sure they're equitably spread for each, that everybody's paying for their share of services, that there's no inequities in the costs. So, we hired HFNH, they're working with us now. We've been supplying them information. And we'll be coming back to you over the next year with proposals on how to set the rates going forward. So, we know that there's this one-time shortfall. We have the funds to cover it. We're asking, on behalf of the council and for your consideration, not to raise rates in 2021.
How do our rates compare to the surrounding cities?
Our rates are not the lowest. I think Foster Cities, for two-size carts, maybe just a little bit smaller, but their proximity to the transfer station is much shorter than ours, and their cost of transportation is less. I, next to them, I think we're probably the lowest around. So, we've been able to hold those costs. We've been able to be competitive, and we've been able to, I think, provide excellent services through Recology and through South Bay Recycling, working with the Waste Authority to provide the best service that we can. Again, it was not interrupted thanks to Recology and South Bay during this crisis. And, you know, we're grateful for your thoughts and your consideration tonight.
Thank you so much, Roxanne. That was a great presentation, and we all appreciate what you do. Questions from council? Councilmember Papin?
Oh, I'm ready for a motion. I know you gotta go to public comment, but I'm ready.
Okay, public comment, it is. I see no public comment. I will close the public comment period, bring it back to the council.
I'll make a motion that we don't include streets.
We have motion and second. Madam Clerk, would you call roll? And Erin, whatever you do, don't bring up that presentation right now.
I don't know what I did. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Don't you dare, Erin.
Yes. Councilmember Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Gofold?
Yes, that passes unanimously. Thank you so much again, Roxanne, and we're moving on to the next item. Item number eighteen, Regulation of the Sale of Electronic Cigarettes, Flavored Tobacco and Sale of Tobacco Products in Pharmacies. Ordinance introduction. I turn it over to Sean Mason.
And do you see my screen, the sideshow?
Yes, we do.
Great. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Just a quick background. So, in 2019, a group of concerned residents came to, under the public comment portion of the council agenda, and requested that the council direct staff to study the prohibition of the sale of flavored tobacco and e-cigarettes within the city. The council directed staff to study the issue and report back in a study session-type format for further direction. In late August of this year, the legislature, California Legislature, passed SB 793 to ban the sale of most, but not all, flavored tobacco products. On September 8th, the staff made a presentation to the council on this issue, and the council directed staff to prepare an ordinance to do three things: prohibit the sale of all flavored tobacco products, prohibit the sale of e-cigarettes within the city, and prohibit the sale of tobacco products in pharmacies. So, the proposed ordinance in your packet amends the San Mateo Municipal Code to do those three things. In addition, the existing municipal code requires tobacco retailers to obtain a retailer permit and provides that the permit may be suspended if the retailer violates any state or federal tobacco-related law. So, that provision has been amended in the proposed ordinance to allow suspension of a permit if the permittee violates city-related tobacco in addition to state or federal law. And so, this would allow suspension of a retailer's permit if they sell flavored tobacco products or electronic cigarettes in violation of this ordinance. In addition, after the publication of this agenda item, a member of the advocacy group identified another provision of the current code that requires tobacco retailers to self-report any violations of state or federal tobacco laws to the San Mateo Police Department in the county of San Mateo. Staff has revised a proposed ordinance to amend this code provision as well to require tobacco retailers to self-report any violations of city tobacco regulations, in addition to state and federal. And so, this will provide us with an additional enforcement tool for these new regulations. An issue for council direction this evening is to answer when this ordinance should go into effect. Ordinances typically go into effect 30 days after they're adopted. The county first banned flavored tobacco products, and then later, in a separate ordinance, banned the sale of electronic cigarettes in unincorporated county territory. For both ordinances, the county ordinances provided a six-month delay in the effective date to allow retailers to adjust to the new requirements. And so, the council, asking council to decide whether to delay the effective date of this ordinance, and if so, for how long. Finally, on Friday, staff notified an organization, California Association of Retail Tobacco Nists, about the proposed ordinance. The association responded requesting that the council delay moving forward on this ordinance until the council has an opportunity to review and understand SB 793. And actually, we did review the provisions of that statute at our last discussion on this item. If the council moves forward with introduction tonight, staff will notify the association and let them know that the ordinance will not be adopted until October 5th, and will have to come back for a second reading, and inform the association that they can submit comments for council consideration in advance of that meeting. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Sean. Questions from the council?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Bonilla.
Okay. Regarding the self-reporting, is there a penalty if they don't self-report?
Yes, if they don't self-report, it's a violation of the code, because it's imposing a mandatory obligation to self-report. And like any other code violation, it can be, there's a range of remedies that are provided for in our code, and everything from administrative citations up to criminal prosecution if it's a particularly egregious violation, maybe it's happened several times before.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned at some point enforcement. So, I think we discussed this previously. Is this another thing where it's complaint-driven?
That's right.
Okay. So, I'm wondering, you say that there is a retailer's permit that is in place, or we could put in place? Could that money be used for enforcement?
There is a permit system already in place. We've had it in our code for several years. And the permit fees are to cover the cost of issuing the licenses and administering that program. And so, I would have to take a look and see whether there's some other basis if we wanted to do additional, some sort of additional fee to finance enforcement. Typically, that's not the way it's done. Enforcement is the service of the city in response to complaints of law enforcement. Typically, you get recovery through the fines and that type of remedy.
Okay. But if we find, for instance, that they're not self-reporting, then how do we find out that there are crimes? So, we received an email from Blythe Young, who is with the Bay Area Chapter of the American Heart Association. And in it, she actually proposed a list of several different things, which make a lot of sense. Because I do really believe that, you know, to put laws in place without any enforcement is just to, you know, attract violations. I have a problem with not enforcing. So, she mentioned something, an annual retail license fee. Is that the same as the permit you mentioned?
Yes.
Okay. What about, well, then, we would have nothing that we could actually say, we couldn't send somebody out for an annual check for compliance? Let's say with, you know, I remember reading years ago, there was a sting. They found like 17 shops that sold tobacco, that sold to minors, right? They would send minors in to buy things. I remember it was the tobacco store, then magazine store on Third Avenue, that used to be next to the Ben Franklin. They got caught, and several others too, right? How do we know that if we don't send somebody to check?
Well, I think it's a little bit, just by the nature of the offense, if it is against the law to sell flavored tobacco or electronic cigarettes, it seems like that's sort of easy to see and will be reported, and we will get complaints, and we can respond in that way. And then, once we respond, then we know that that retailer has an obligation to report. And so, I'm not as concerned with that type, this type of violation just given its nature than as compared to selling to underage purchasers, because that actually does require sort of a sting process to make sure you're catching folks. But this is just, all it takes is one person walking in and seeing flavored tobacco or electronic cigarettes on the shelves to know there's a violation there, and I expect that we will get complaints.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think all they have to do is keep them under the counter. But when we do notify them of the new ordinance, do we share with them information about the requirement for self-reporting and so forth?
Sure, we can make sure that we educate the retailers on all the requirements of the code.
Okay. All right. And then, regarding penalties, if some establishments are found to be in violation, and they do have to pay some kind of a fine or a fee, can we make those escalating for second and third offenses and so forth?
Yes, they actually, they're actually already in provisions of our code, there is escalation on the number of offenses.
Okay, those are my questions. Thanks.
Thanks, Rick. I see public comment adding up. Let's get to the public comment real fast. Please raise your hand if you have a comment for the public comment period. And I'll remind everybody that this issue is before the council, because we unanimously asked for it to be in front of the council. So, with that in mind, I will go to these friendly faces that we've heard from before, and start with Bonnie Halpern Felscher.
Hi, good evening. Yes, this is Dr. Bonnie Halpern Felscher. You know what I'm gonna say, so obviously, I'm very much in support of this ordinance. I mostly want to thank the council for hearing this so quickly, and thank City Councilmember Mason for, or City Attorney, excuse me, Mason, for drafting this ordinance so quickly. I just wanna just...
You demoted him. You have to be careful about that.
Sorry, City Attorney. Sorry about that. I thought I corrected myself. It's been a long day. Just want to thank you for drafting this ordinance, and it's fantastic so quickly. I just want to say, you know, Councilmember Bonilla, in your statements around enforcement, just to encourage some level of enforcement, I think that is really important. We do know that parents and youth are sometimes reporting it. I've had emails and phone calls about it to me in my office. But I think the more that we can do enforcement, the better for this to continue. So, I just want to encourage some level of city efforts at the city level, not just at the retail store level. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Halpern Felscher. To Blythe Young, please share with us other comments besides what Councilmember Bonilla shared with us.
Thank you, council and mayor. So, as your colleague mentioned, I'm the Community Advocacy Director for the American Heart Association, and I want to thank you for considering the flavors aspect for the city of San Mateo. It's a really big step. You mentioned earlier the passage of 793. It was a big victory for tobacco advocates in California, but Big Tobacco was ready and waiting to file to collect signatures that would put this on the ballot in 2022 and delay implementation for up to two years, even if they don't win. So, I think we all have learned that in 2020, there's nothing that we can take for certain, and we have to do what we can at the local level to support people and make sure that they live the longest, healthiest lives possible. Your support and passage of restriction for flavored tobacco in the city of San Mateo protects San Mateo's youth and swarms Big Tobacco while the state is being delayed for two years. So, as mentioned, in addition to your flavors policy, I would like you to separately look at an update to your permit. And if that's my timer, then I can stop there.
You are fantastic. Thank you so much for your comments. We appreciate them very much. Cheryl Angeles.
Good evening, mayor and city council folks. I just wanted to express, from a business standpoint, and I could be totally wrong, that I thought that the state had already implemented something that would take place after the first of the year. And if that is the case, I would hope that you would at least allow the businesses just a few months to pivot and figure out what they're going to do next. And I think we all know that tobacco products are harmful, and so, I'm not disagreeing with that at all. But I've been, you know, bombarded with businesses calling me on a daily basis about different things. And so, if we could just allow them a little bit of time to get prepared, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. And we'll move on to Patricia McDaniel.
Hi, I'm a researcher, excuse me, at the University of California, San Francisco, who specializes in tobacco control. I'm also a city resident. I won't say too much more about why I support this ordinance, because you heard all the reasons that it's a good idea a few weeks ago. I just wanted to encourage you to adopt the ordinance without delay. January 1st, 2021 seems like an appropriate date. Since that is the date, the state law would have gone into effect. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Brad Bartsbivian.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. Thank you for hearing me. I represent the National HUCA Community Association. We're a national body that works to self-regulate the hookah industry, which is no threat to children. HUCA is a three-feet-long machine that you cannot mix with vape or electronic cigarette. It's only used in hookah lounges that only allow 21 and above people to smoke. So, I would encourage you to exclude hookah from this ordinance, just like your own state senator, Jerry Hill, did in SB 793. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jaime Rojas, or is it Jaime Rojas?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. This is Jaime Rojas, and I represent the National Association Tobacco Outlets. We're a national trade organization with members located in the city of San Mateo. Our members have submitted letters with concerns about the initial proposal ordinance for tonight. The main focus of this ordinance appears to be the increase of underage use of e-cigarettes and nicotine vapor products. But the ordinance instead bans the sale of all flavored tobacco products, even though the youth usage of menthol cigarettes, flavored smokeless tobacco products, flavored cigars, and pipe tobacco are at historic lows and decreasing further. The ordinance does not address the issues of online sales, or even more importantly, increasing youth education on e-cigarettes and vaping in the San Mateo Union School District, even addressing Councilmember Bonilla's issue on local code enforcement. The ordinance is written as government overreach, as adults have rights and choices to purchase these legal products. We ask the city council to consider the following state law and exempts shisha, cream, cigars, and loosely piped tobacco from the flavor ban. According to the California Health and Kids Survey of San Mateo Union High School District in 2019, it shows that 14% have smoked cigarettes in the previous 30 days. Only 2% have used smokeless tobacco in the previous 30 days. The same 30 days, we've had 36% of high schools in the district use e-cigarettes. 34 have used alcohol. 27 have been binge drinking. And 47... And 47 have used marijuana. So the use of traditional tobacco products is not the problem for San Mateo high school union students.
Thank you, Jaime.
Thank you so much.
Thank you to Jaime. And next, it is George Johnson. George, we're having trouble with your microphone. I'm going to go to Annie Teigen, and we'll come back to George in a second.
I cannot hear anything.
George, we can hear you now, go ahead, George.
The mute isn't working. I cannot hear your response. I don't know.
George, can you hear us?
Okay, sorry, my name is George Johnson. If you can hear me, hopefully you can. I am a volunteer for the Hookah Chamber of Commerce. I also manufacture traditional wooden hookah pipes. Many of my customers are in the Bay Area. I want to say that the hookah is a longstanding tradition and culture in many Arab, Turk, Persian, Armenian cultures, and should be considered as a cultural item that's used in the specific practices of someone's traditional culture. So I urge you guys to consider an exemption, just as we have gotten in SB 793 with your, as the previous caller had mentioned, with Senator Hill. Hookah is not the problem, and we totally agree with preventing youth access to vaping products, and we do not want anybody to be selling to minors. Should that be the case, I agree with stricter penalties, ID check, 21 and up only locations. There are a myriad of other ways to do so. Thank you so much for your time. I don't know how long I've been speaking, thank you so much.
Thank you, George. Annie Teigen.
Hi there, my name's Annie Teigen, and I am from the Tobacco Free Kids Organization. I was not able to attend the last meeting, so I really wanted to be sure to attend this evening to applaud your efforts and just to say thank you. We know that youth in California are using hookah. They are using menthol cigarettes, flavored cigarets. And of course, many of these youth are vaping in our middle and high schools. And as you heard, yes, the state did pass a bill, and the governor signed it into law, sent Bill 793. And as Blythe Young mentioned, there'll be a two-year delay if they're successful in gathering their signatures. They're currently out there, you may have seen them in front of your Costcos. They have a multimillion-dollar campaign right now gathering signatures to overturn it on the ballot. And because of that two-year delay, our researchers did the math. It will result in $1.1 billion in revenue for the tobacco industry, just in menthol cigarettes alone. And what's worse, 37,000 California kids are going to start vaping in the meantime. So we really appreciate the fact that you're not willing to let Big Tobacco change kind of the will of the legislature, and you're willing to kind of take action yourselves at the local level. I did listen as you're discussing the enforcement process, and I would also strongly recommend implementing more strong enforcement with some teeth, with an escalating fee per fence potentially at the city level too.
Thank you, Annie. Thank you so much to Annie, and now Tricia Barr.
Hi, this is Tricia Barr, and I'm a parent of three school-age kids. And I just wanted to speak a bit to the tobacco lobbyists Jaime Rojas and George Johnson. I know that they'd mentioned SB 793 had the exemption from Senator Hill, but that was not, he reluctantly accepted that. It was not a welcome amendment to where he had started with that bill. And I know George is based in Southern California, so it sounds like he has some customers up here. But I think for San Mateo and our citizens, this isn't something that we want. Also, the implementation and effective date for SB 793 would have been January 1st. So as Patricia McDaniel had emphasized, I think having that date at the latest as an enforcement date would be great. And I'm just volunteering to help educate retailers and do retailer visits. I'm the Tobacco Education Coalition co-chair with San Mateo County, and I'm happy to help.
Thank you so much, Tricia. And Myra Amador. Myra, you are still muted.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Myra Amador, and I'm with the San Mateo County Health Tobacco Prevention Program. Tonight, I would like to provide some tobacco-related educational information. According to the 2018 National Youth Tobacco Survey between 2017 and 2018, the use of e-cigarettes among high schoolers increased by 78%. During the same time period, the e-cigarette use prevalence was 20.8% among San Mateo County and San Francisco high schoolers, while the statewide prevalence was 10.9%. In addition, nearly 81% of youth ages 12 to 17 who had ever used a tobacco product reported that the first product they used was flavored. This coincides with the fact that flavorings mask the harsh taste of tobacco, which makes it easier for youth to initiate tobacco use. Additionally, I wanted to add that we coordinate with the sheriff's office to do sting operations each year. And last year, they visited eighty tobacco retailers in San Mateo. Four of the stores were closed when visited, but out of the seventy-six, there were four that sold to minors. Our program has provided assistance to cities that have adopted tobacco-related policies, and we are available to support the city of San Mateo as well. We can include support with providing retailer and community education. For example, sending letters to retailers to let them know about the ordinance, as well as responding to calls or emails to address any questions they may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Amador. And Shanice Stevenson.
Hi, I'm Shanice Stevenson. I'm with the Bay Area Community Health Advisory Council, where Gloria Brown is the founder and Lisa Teeler is the executive director. And we have been working around health inequities as it relates to individuals of color and underrepresented communities. I'm here just to share a little bit about our perspective on this. We just want to remind people, we are in a pandemic, I said epidemic, but pandemic, sorry. And this is where students are getting stressed. And so the chances of doing more vaping is high. And so I would love for us to kind of think about how we can shorten that time where students can have access to flavored tobacco. And I just want to also really talk about just making sure we think about, this is for the kids, and wanting to make sure they don't have access to flavored, including any flavoring, including menthol and mint in cigarettes or vaping or any of those things. It's really important our kids don't have access to that so that it lessens their opportunity to be a part of the next generation of smokers. Because that's one of the reasons why kids are enticed, is the flavors. So thank you very much for allowing me to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. And Adili Skilin.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, council members, for giving me the opportunity. Again, I am a teacher at Sequoia High School in Redwood City, and I live in San Mateo. And I just want to echo what Shanice said, that there has been a rise in vaping. There has been a rise with students. I have seen it, I know the statistics. I'm not sure where some of the tobacco company statistics come from, but in real time, in real life, I've seen the rise in to... I just implore you that, and I'm so grateful that you have this on the table, but I implore you to see about getting this acted as soon as possible. Just, that's all I have to say, and thank you so much.
Thank you. And Galaxy A20.
Yes, this is Diana Pettit, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Galaxy. Just kidding, Diana.
Hi, that's okay. I just want to say that I've raised three kids. I'm a baby boomer, I know what a hookah is. And I live in a condo, Gateway Commons. I just want you to know that when I am driving down El Camino, and sometimes I come home very late from my daughter's house, the caveman and the one on the corner, I think around 22nd, they're open till past 11 o'clock at night. I think that if we could maybe turn back the time where they have to close their businesses at least by 10:00, would be kind of helping the situation. Also, I don't think, I think that, you know, when we talk about high school students doing it in San Francisco area and so forth, it now goes down to our junior highs, I mean, our junior high students. And we have public announcements where there's young girls, like in sixth grade, discussing it. But honestly, San Mateo has a lot of shops. Burlingame does not. I think we need to curb the franchise, even though it's going to hurt us tax-wise.
Thank you, Ms. Pettit. And I thought I saw one more hand. Does the phone number ending in 625 want to give a public comment? All right, seeing no other hands, then I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for a motion, for any comments or a motion on the ordinance before us.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Rick. I did see one more hand. Going to the public comment for JGO.
Hi there. Thank you for taking my hand. So I am a parent in San Mateo, and I do have children. And I think that this goes back to where are these kids' parents? That these kids are getting a hold of this. You may have one or two shops that do break the law at times, and they should be penalized very fully. But it also goes back to where are these kids' parents? I don't think that the entire adult population should be penalized. You guys need to come up with a better way, because we don't ban alcohol, we don't ban regular cigarettes, we're not banning other things, and it's going to put these kids back to pills. So I would highly encourage you guys to come up with other ways and think of other alternatives. You're going to have more shops abandoned down your El Camino, down all your other streets, and you're not thinking of the black market. This is going to bring more crime and more loopholes into our children. I'm not against it, but there are things, and I'm not for it, but there are other circumstances that will come from this.
Thank you so much for your public comment. I will bring it back to the council. Rick, I'm sorry for cutting you off, I just wanted to finish up the public comment.
So I want to add, if you're ready, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
I'd like to say that I would like to make a motion to approve, and I would like to seek 30-day implementation of the ordinance.
I want to clarify 30 days. So you're saying the ordinance will be passed at the next council meeting, October 5th, and 30 days after that, November 5th? Or maybe my math is off by a day, is when it would go into effect?
Yes.
Okay, so let's chat about that for a second. Let me go to Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes, I did want to chat about that because I am definitely in favor of passing this, but I do take heed to the remarks by our Chamber of Commerce, and I just want to do this in a fair way. 30 days, I think, might be a little bit too quickly to have these businesses transition, I think. I would be more comfortable with three months. And again, this is coming from somebody who also proposed this during our Blue Sky workshop. I'm 100% for this. I just want to make sure that we're not, I mean, these businesses are going to have to have some time to adjust, some time to pivot, and I just want to be fair to them.
So that would be January 1st?
Around, yeah, around there, just longer than 30 days.
Okay, other comments from the council?
So if nobody else is, oh, are you going to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, one of the reasons why the council felt compelled to act on this was because of the predatory marketing towards children, which is quite different than some of the other substances that were raised in the previous public comment. So this is quite different in terms of the marketing strategy that has been unchecked and unregulated at the federal level until this bill has passed, which will potentially be delayed for the next two years. So I don't see this as an apples, I don't see that as a fair comparison when we're talking about, you know, the way that this has, the product has been marketed specifically to children, and the increase, the undeniable, and, you know, increase in use specifically in our county among children, and the known violations in sales targeting children.
Where are you with respect to the timing?
I would support three months as well.
And I would as well.
Rick, I share your concern. I think that this is highly concerning. I think that we want to do this as quickly as possible. That's why we brought it back to the council so quickly. But I think it is fair to say January 1st. There were some comments made by members of the public about why would we make this illegal? It's a highly addictive poison that hurts people and kills people, and they're getting children addicted when they're underage. That's why we want to make it illegal. So I have no qualms about that. Kids, the idea that kids are going to go to pills as an alternative, that's why pills are illegal. I mean, we want to keep, we want to keep these things out of the hands of children because it hurts children and it hurts public health. And that's why we write ordinances like this, is to protect public health and to protect kids. You know, if we knew everything about cigarettes at the beginning, cigarettes never would have been legal in the first place, and here we are. So Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Thank you. I also wanted to see if we wanted to kind of do something about having escalating penalties for repeat offenders. That definitely sounded like a good idea to me. You know, I feel like what happens in this situation, well, who knows if somebody's going to get caught off guard and do this unknowingly, but we want to make sure that if somebody gets caught once, they do not get caught again. The penalties are very severe if they get caught again. That's my thoughts on that. And I just wanted to add a little bit to the mayor's comments because I wholeheartedly agree. I mean, the way I look at this is if we could only prevent a handful of our city's children from being addicted, then this is worth doing. And who knows how many it could be? When I was in junior high and when I was in high school, it was like chewless tobacco. And the kids didn't even know what they were doing. They were trying to do it to fit in, to be cool, to... Then they got addicted to the nicotine, and they're just not in the position to make these decisions themselves. And I am not for government overreach or butting into other people's business. But this is, I think, really important. It is a poison, and we have to act. We can't control online sales. We can't control what Redwood City sells, but we can control what's sold in our city, and that's our jurisdiction. And I feel like we need to do what we can in our city and our community that we care about.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to go to Councilmember Papen first.
Yeah, I mean, I spoke last time on this, I'll say it again. And I'm the one of us that's got a teenager at home. It is happening in our schools, and I have absolutely no reservations about enacting this legislation. I think our city attorney has mentioned we already have on the books increasing penalties. But if we could get some clarification on that, I, sorry, I'd like to know about it because it may not be enough, and maybe we would like to do more. So what is it that we already have?
So we have a municipal code of two volumes, twenty-some-odd chapters that enact all sorts of requirements, legal obligations, right? And what we try to do is rather than, for each chapter that we add to the code, having specific penalties for that chapter and having a very complicated code, we have a title that basically lays out the enforcement menu that could be applied to any violation of any provision of the code. That includes citation in the criminal courts, or includes administrative citations that are adjudicated at the city level. administrative citations that are adjudicated at the city level. And for, right now in our code, for the criminal courts, if we, if we cite, uh, in the criminal courts, we would start with an infraction, um, as opposed to a misdemeanor. And, and the infraction provision provides for, right now I'm reading from it, a, a fine not exceeding $100 for a first conviction. I believe it's, screen here, $200 for the second within one year, and $500 for each additional conviction within one year. And so there is that escalation if, if we charge somebody with an infraction. Um, frankly, unless there's a really good excuse, if somebody has been cited for this once and gets, and is cited again, uh, and is cited a third time, I'd be more inclined to charge, which we have the authority to do as a misdemeanor as opposed to an infraction, to get, you know, to step it up even more, because that's someone who isn't getting the message, right? Um, so that we do, the point being that there is built into our system, into the enforcement provisions of our code that apply to all 20 some odd chapters of our code, a lot of flexibility in terms of, you know, how, how we charge, uh, violations.
Um, can I ask a question about that?
Go ahead, Rick.
So Sean, let's say, and $100 sounds like a minuscule amount in this world, for a starter, right now. But let's say on the first offense, it's an infraction, and it's a fine, right, of some small amount, maybe more than 100, we can talk about that. But let's say if there's a second offense within the first year, can we specify that it would be charged as a misdemeanor and with also maybe a higher fine? Well, I know we're not talking about just this. I know that. But these are small amounts for any violation.
That's a, a policy call for, for the council to make. The, um, you know, one thing is that when it says, uh, for an infraction, a fine of $100, though, these are, infractions are, are adjudicated in the courts. By the time you get through with the courts, there are court penalties that significantly increase the actual amount that the offender has to pay. So, um, it, it is, tends to be, the result tends to be more punitive than just $100.
Okay, but we're talking about stores, right? Retail outlets, places that are selling things. They're making money, right? It's not like poor individuals.
That's right.
Yeah. So is this something we could come back to, Sean, at a later time to try and, uh, decide if we want to do anything different?
Sure. You, you know, if the council wants to decide to do something different tonight, it can do that. If, if it decides it wants to, you know, enact it as, as drafted, and then see what, how it plays out and, and come back and revisit, that's an option.
Well, I mean, we could come back to revisit the, the issue of, you know, the, the first, second, and third fine and how they're, uh, whether it's an infraction or a misdemeanor and so forth. We could do that separately. We could enact the ordinance tonight, right?
Well, it's, it's introduced tonight. It takes two readings. So it would be introduced tonight and adopted, uh, at the next meeting. And yes, you could revisit the, the penalties at any time in the future.
Okay, thanks. So, thank you, Sean. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I heard you talking, um, but I didn't hear you state a position on implementation. I'm still wondering if I can interest somebody in trying to save some kids' lives by enacting on November 1st, instead, or December 1st, instead of January 1st.
Can I, can I offer a middle ground?
Sure. I mean, we're still talking.
Okay, so, I mean, I, um, I, I feel your urgency, um, Councilmember Bonia. And, um, and I also, I feel like the question of enforcement and our capacity to do enforcement and public education is, um, you know, keeps con, we keep coming back to that. And I, I'm curious for, to hear from staff, you know, is there a way for us to partner with, uh, with Myra, um, from, you know, at the County Prevention Center, uh, to, to front-load some of the, the education, some of the eyes on the ground, um, before the, um, before it actually goes into effect, to support, A, support the businesses to transition, and B, also make sure that we, um, that everyone's operating in compliance and that there aren't sales to young people. Um, so if we can, if we can, if we can get ahead of the curve in terms of our enforcement and, and education, engaging the businesses, um, and engaging our, our community partners, maybe, um, you know, maybe that's, that's the, you know, a strategy that will essentially get us to where we want to be as, you know, and keep everybody safe, too.
Well, I think that's what we envisioned for this time period, was to do the educate, at least that's what I envisioned. Did I?
Were we envisioning the, I, I didn't hear that, that we're envisioning the education to start before the, uh, enactment?
Yes.
Well, after our final vote on this ordinance.
I think, I think it's going to start tomorrow. I think that the Daily Journal will, will run an article announcing that the city of San Mateo has adopted, uh, the most, the strictest tobacco policy in the country. And it'll be picked up across the country, and people are going to know how seriously we take this and how important kids' health is to us. Um, but we have a lot of staff who are working from home right now, and we have a lot of staff who we have given many other priorities to. And so to add on top of that, doing outreach to these businesses, um, it, maybe just too much. And so I'm willing to give staff a little bit more time to do all of that outreach to these businesses. Uh, and so I think that that probably gets us to January 1st. I think that's where, where we land. Um, how, how do the other?
I'll end my motion with January 1st.
All right, all right. I think, I think we have consensus on that. I think that's being fair to our staff. We do want to get this outreach to the whole, the whole city and all the businesses. And, um, uh, so we have a motion.
I'll second that.
Excellent. We have motion and second. Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
Yes, Councilmember Bonia.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Pappin.
Yes.
Mayor Goffel.
Yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you all very much, um, for that discussion. Moving on to the next item, item 19, Measure R, Measure Y, Public Education Effort. We have a presentation from our own city council member, Sean Mason. Sorry to demote you again, Sean. Just kidding.
I'm, I'm honored. So can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Great. Uh, so, uh, background for, for this item. Um, background on the general plan. Uh, California law requires all cities and counties to prepare and, and maintain a general plan that guides the community's physical development during the planning period. Typically, general plan, planning periods run from, you know, 10 to 20 years. In 1991, San Mateo voters enacted Measure H. Measure H amended the provisions of the general plan on building heights and densities, and added a policy requiring developers of residential projects to provide a percentage of the unit at affordable prices. Uh, Measure H contained a sunset provision. It would have sunsetted with, in, uh, 2005. In 2004, San Mateo voters approved Measure P, which made certain minor modifications to the policies enacted in Measure H, and extended the sunset date to December 31st, 2020. This November, San Mateo voters will be asked to consider two proposals to modify the policies enacted by Measure H and P, that, and also to extend the sunset date for another 10 years. At the end of the last council meeting, uh, council members expressed concern about the potential for voter confusion with these two similar, but with important distinctions of these two measures, and asked staff to report back on steps that can be taken to address this concern. Uh, even before council expressed these concerns, staff had been receiving a, a number of questions about the two measures, the differences, their effects, the potential outcomes if one or both of the measures are passed by the voters. And staff believes that the publication of an FAQ document, frequently asked question document on the city website, could be an effective way of educating San Mateo voters on, on the measure. Um, our, our thought would be to maintain, uh, the FAQ over time as new questions come in. And, uh, and we could reference the FAQ through our various, uh, social media outlets. Um, tonight is an opportunity for the council to, if there are other ideas that the council has in terms of, uh, reaching out to the public and educating them about this, these measures. And, uh, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Sean. And I'll ask the council if there's any questions at this point.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Bonia.
Thank you. I'm looking at the, uh, the attached, uh, question and answer, uh, sheet that you provided. I'm looking down at the, uh, last question on the bottom of the first page of this document. The question is, how does Measure Y affect the current general plan inclusionary housing policy? In the middle, I'm reading it. It's making sense. And then I get to, I think it's the third sentence in. It's in the middle. It starts with Measure R would amend the current inclusionary housing policy and authorize city council to amend blah, blah, blah. It's, it's kind of confusing because the question is about Measure Y, and the first measure you start talking about here is Measure R. Sean, do you want to take a look at that? Because I think some people might be further confused.
Sure. I, I don't have the document up, um, so if, possibly this is a typo, uh, but I can take a look at that and fix that if it is.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's all the questions I have.
Councilmember Lee.
So, Sean, I want to thank you so much for this effort. And I think it's really important for us, um, as a city to provide, um, provide full information and clarify some of the confusion out there. I don't, I don't want San Mateo to exist in a post-fact world. Um, and, and I, I think that, um, there is a lot of confusion and misinformation floating around. Um, I, I, I was, I think, challenged by the FAQ in the way that it's written, because I don't feel like it's in plain English, um, for, for the vast majority of people to read and actually understand. And I think that, you know, I think there may be a role for our communications, um, expertise to, to work alongside you, uh, maybe providing some examples, uh, in terms of, you know, what, what, how the policy could be implemented, making the, um, the language a little bit clearer, um, and, and to the layperson who's, who's not a lawyer or a policy wonk. Um, and I think furthermore, there, there are, um, you know, we know that there, there's a lot of communication out there about both measures and statements being made. Like, I just received, um, I just received this flyer here under my doorstep, and the headline, the top line, um, he, argument to be made is, um, Measure R stops affordable housing. Uh, we know that that's not true, that, um, that Measure R does not stop affordable housing. Um, and so there, there are many, I think, there's many aspects of, of, of the arguments being made that are, um, that are partial information, that are misleading. I, I also received an email just today about, um, a question about how North Central was going to be treated, and that, um, and that the, the maps actually didn't, didn't align with the text, and that North Central was, was going to be, um, blanket upstone. That's also false. Um, so I, I, I'm really concerned about, about the, the information that we're presenting to be, um, to be clear and informative and accessible. And I, I don't think that we're there yet. And I don't know if we're actually addressing some of the, um, the, the mistruths and misinformation that's actually out here in the, you know, in, in the public sphere already.
So with respect to the, the comment in terms of working with, uh, our communications folks, I think that makes a lot of sense. And Samantha and I already talked about it last week, and, and will be, uh, meeting and working on, on making the, uh, the document more accessible.
And so do you think that we can be, I mean, providing, um, some of the information that's being circulated on some of the, both sides of the campaign? You know, it's every, you know, every, every, um, every campaign should be held to the test of truth, right? Um, and so do we, what's the process here? We, we forward it to you, and then that gets incorporated, um, in the FAQ? Or do you want us to elevate specific questions? Um, the, is the public, you know, is that, is this an open call to the public to ask questions as well, um, for clarification?
Well, there, I think with respect to, you know, I think the better pr, the practice would be for, uh, us to respond to questions from the public. Uh, you know, there are campaigns, uh, on both sides. And the, you know, I think we need to leave to the political process, the, the characterization of documents as being accurate or inaccurate, and, and, you know, spin versus, um, a misstatement of fact, right? Uh, and, and I'd prefer, uh, and I think would require that staff not get involved in the process of, uh, 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 because we, we're not supposed to get involved in the process of taking sides and, and characterizing in from statements as being false or misleading. Um, would not feel comfortable with having staff in the position of, um, issuing Pinocchios, um, on, on things that are distributed, uh, by, by both sides of the campaign. And so to the extent that people have questions, uh, after, reading a document and have questions, like, for example, if someone says, does Measure R, if it passes, would that be the end of affordable housing? Well, I, I could say, because it's a matter of fact, that Measure R does not eliminate, does not remove the inclusionary program from the general plan. So the, the, in fact, it keeps and maintains the inclusionary program in the general plan. It allows for alternative means of satisfying that requirement. And, and so that's a statement of fact that we can respond to, right?
Right. And nor does it remove the council ordinance, which has increased our affordable, um, our affordable requirement to 15%, which is 5% above what, um, what Measure Y requires.
That's right.
Other questions from council members? Councilmember Lee, did you have more questions?
No, thanks.
I'm going to go to public comment then. I see we have a hand from Ms. Nash, Lisa Diaz-Nash.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city attorney, and thank you, council members. I think doing a Q and A is a great idea. I think, I completely support Councilmember Lee's suggestion that we make the language as accessible and plain English as possible. I think Samantha Weigl can do a great job of that. I would suggest three areas that we may want to look at, or you may wish to look at. Number one, with regard to INLO fees, uh, yes, they are an alternative, but I would suggest that the comment should be made that the current INLO fee program was not designed to accommodate major housing projects. So it would have to be retooled to support this. Number two, I think there's an opportunity to talk about the role of the general plan 2040 in this entire arena, and another opportunity to educate the public as to this is a great way for people to come together and talk about land use issues that isn't mentioned here, and I think it's good context. And then number three, uh, the last question, what happens if neither measure passes? I think there's already been a very public, uh, commitment by most council members not to make any changes to existing policy until the general plan is finished. So that may be material to people's understanding. But I, I submit those as suggestions, uh, but definitely applaud the effort to make it more accessible language. Thank you.
Thank you for that public comment. I see another comment from Michael Wineau.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to say, I, I strongly encourage the city to stay out of this, except under the, the broadest of, uh, recommendations. The FAQ that I saw written up seemed, uh, reasonable in that regard, but given this council's reasonable in that regard. But given this council's clear opposition to measure Y and we couldn't, we don't even have an answer from Councilmember Lee on her support or lack of support for measure R. She didn't answer the question the other night. And she's pointed out a couple of things that may, you know, that, that maybe have been misinterpreted on the Y side. But are we, I don't know that we have any guarantees that we're going to get the same treatment in terms of some of the things that we might be hearing on the other side. So I think it would be in the best interest of the city to really kind of very much keep this an arm's length and, and avoid getting too involved in it. Thank you very much.
Any other hands? Any other speakers? Ms. Pappin? You're still muted. I'm sorry. Ms. Pappin, could you unmute yourself? There you go.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, first of all, I, I listened to next door almost religiously. I read it.
Uh oh.
The people are afraid. And you know, Mayor, because you say oh like that, it's a great way to communicate with people. And our council member, Emma Lee, she does that. She expresses her feelings in the neighborhood section. And not only that, for Hansby and central neighborhoods, it's a way for us to communicate with each other. That's the problem here, Mayor Gothos, with all of my respect to you. When AB 1763 was put through, the people in this city now think that AB 1763 is going to let you guys do whatever you want with our projects here. And that is not the truth. Okay? Whether it's Project P or R, I sit on property here in Gateway Commons, where you are now going to put a townhouse across the street and an apartment building where you asked the guy to clean up the area. Now, we can't even park our cars there now. And we've got two taco trucks that run a commercial entity every day. Make, you know, we don't care that he's making money or have a commercial entity, but that's our parking spaces. I just want you to know that the people of San Mateo have worked very hard in 10, the last 10 years. That's why they put P in. You need to listen to the constituents. And also I want to say that Concord, the guy who is putting up Concord for us, where he put the townhouses and you could pay for them. We live in first time homeowners here in Gateway Commons. And it's a great suggestion. You get property tax for the city. The people can live here for 30 years. And you know what? They're part of a community. So I interest people to do P and get some multi-unit places.
Thank you, Ms. Pappin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Any other hands up? Any other public comment on this item? Seeing that I'll close the public comment period, bring back the council. And our city attorney, Sean Mason. It sounds like there's more work to be done and you're going to wordsmith it with the communications team. And you have input from, from the council on trying to put out the truth so that people can be informed voters in November and, and make the right decision.
Can I just add one thing?
Please.
To the mayor. So I, I think that again, there is some clear misunderstanding about the basis of our in lieu fees. My understanding, and I think this is worthwhile to include in the FAQ, but my understanding is that we have a very sound independent financial analysis that is the basis of our in lieu fees. And that the in lieu fees that are being charged on a fractional basis are actually half of what the true cost gap is. And so, so that, the, the, the notion that we would be applying the current fee structure as it is today in its half form is, is to my understanding a incorrect assumption. And so I think that again, getting clarification about the, the basis of the in lieu fees, the report, the financial report that, that went into it, which I believe is very current of this year. And, and then going deeper into explaining how the decision was made to halve them. And then if we, you know, if measure R were to pass, the, the process the council would go through to, to apply fees. So, so that's, I think, another example of a clear misunderstanding that's being perpetuated in the community. And that could use some clarification.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Thank you. I just wanted to express my support for the city attorney because I know, I know you're getting a lot of, a lot of information coming left and right. But I do agree with your, your inclination to to work hard to educate the public as best as they can. But first and foremost, this is a political election. This is a political process. And I think it's easy to start getting caught up in the different questions and the rhetoric. And then all of a sudden, it doesn't seem like we're impartial, like we, we are required to be by law. So I, I just want to express my support for you as city attorney to, to tread cautiously when it comes to trying to straighten out, because one person's clarification is another person's falsehood and vice versa on, on each of these issues. So.
I'd like, I'd like to add, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Councilmember Benia.
Yeah, I would like to basically echo some of what Eric just said. I think it's, it's a viable tool for seeking to impart correct information or, you know, to address questions that come from the public. I think it, it's potentially, you know, very difficult to do properly. So I give you a lot of credit for having the courage to structure this. I support it. I think it's a viable tool to get proper information out there in an impartial way. So thank you very much for bringing that to us.
I don't see any other council members who want to speak to this issue. I, I, I'll just add that I think truthiness is a hard thing to add into this. I think there are hard facts. I think there are things that are outright lies that need to be corrected. So to that extent, I leave it to you, our city attorney, to make sure that the record is corrected and that we just have facts out there and, and not falsehoods. With that, I don't think we need anything else. You have been provided direction. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item, item number 20 is our COVID update. Update number 16. We are well into the 16th year of COVID. So take it away, city attorney, city. I, I just demoted, I'm sorry, I demoted you.
I know, that might be a, might be a promotion, depends on your perspective.
Yeah, I know, I know.
All right.
Welcome back.
Thank you. All right. So we'll get going. So first I want to start off with the health orders. So San Mateo County, as of tonight, is still in the purple tier. But however, we could move to the red tier as early as tomorrow. So we've met the, the county has met the red tier criteria for one week, so awaiting confirmation that we've met it for a second consecutive week. And if so, that would move us into the red tier. And if we move into that tier and assuming there are no additional restrictions placed locally at the county level, our restaurants would be able to open up indoors at 25% capacity. Gyms could open indoors at 10% capacity and El Solons could open indoor with modification. And that's just a few examples of the changes that would occur if we move into the red tier. So operationally, Parks and Rec still working on expanding the distance learning program. This past week, King Center added 14 middle school students. So they're at capacity of 64. We've opened up at the senior center as well and are serving 28 students there. And we're looking potentially to use church facilities. One of the biggest problems that we're having right now is just limited staffing resources. We're trying to hire people as quickly as we can to, to be able to staff so we can continue to expand this, this important service. Our parks amenities are open for the most part with a few exceptions. Athletic fields are still limited to small groups of five or fewer or by permit. Our group picnic areas and playgrounds remain closed based on health orders. And certain parks bathrooms are still closed due to resource constraints. So what's happening is we are, some of our higher, higher volume parks, those bathrooms are being cleaned more frequently. And that's where we're putting our, our staff resources. And we'll continue to monitor that and, and expand the cleanings as, as best as we can going forward with, with limited resources. So our library is continuing to be creative and innovative. While they can't open up the building, they're doing more and more outside. They've introduced a Wi-Fi cafe this month. And what that's doing is enabling safe Wi-Fi access and use of Chromebooks and printing outside at the main library, which is really exciting. Our curbside pickup at the main and branch libraries has been very popular. Almost 70,000 materials have been either returned or distributed. And over 6,500 customers have been served through this program. And the storytimes at the parks have also been successful with four storytimes held for approximately 100 children. Public Works is still continuing to monitor and maintain the safe street segments as well as the outdoor dining parklet barricades. So I know that's been a big, a big boost for the downtown and for the other areas of the city with the outdoor dining. It is taking about 24 hours of maintenance a week. So it is a, a bit maintenance heavy, but I think it's well worth the effort with the benefit that it's providing to our restaurants and to our residents. Human Resources Program, or Department, excuse me, they are still managing our redeployment program. We still have nine employees that are redeployed outside of their core work. The predominance of that work is, is doing census outreach calls of which we've made over 1,700 since May of this year to try to boost up the census response. And we're also looking to potentially redeploy some employees to assist with, with the distance learning program, which I, I explained some of those resource constraints. So we are looking to see if any of our, any of our employees that are available could be redeployed to that program. Community development, heavy, heavy development activity. So since the beginning of the fiscal year, we've issued over almost 700 permits. We've done over 900 plan checks and consultations and nearly 4,000 inspections over that time. In addition to redeployed employees making census outreach calls, we are coordinating census canvassing for the county census. It's on the, the final push now and the county's reached out to ask for some assistance in trying to coordinate volunteers to do some on the ground canvassing. So our community development department is, is coordinating that and seeing what we can do to assist the county with that effort. And then our code enforcement team is working hard, continuing to educate on, on COVID-19 restrictions and, and providing outreach to, to our businesses to make sure that they're compliant with the health orders. City manager's office is coordinating a mobile COVID-19 testing site in North Central. It's targeted specifically for neighborhood residents. It's going to be this weekend at the King Center on Saturday from, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That's very exciting. And then they're also continuing to work very closely across many departments on parklet safety issues, which Kathy will cover in, in the, the presentation that follows this one. And then finally, the city attorney's office. Just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that the commercial eviction moratorium does expire at the end of this month. If we want to take any further action on that. And with that, council confirmation tonight, requesting confirmation affirming the continued need for the declaration of the local health emergency. That, that affirmation is needed every 60 days. So if we do want to continue with the, the declaration of the local health emergency, we'll need that affirmation tonight. But in terms of confirmation of actions taken and request to the local health, local emergency proclamation, there are none this week. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Yes, Councilmember Pappin.
Just have a quick question. Can you just kind of describe what's happening at the library outside? Are they doing it sort of on their?
This library right here?
Yeah, the one right there. Is it that they're doing this printing on the side courtyards or you stand in front of the building? How is that working? I, I didn't know about that.
I'm going to ask our city librarian who's on to chime in and provide some details on that. James?
I thought he was here.
We'll come back to James in a minute. I actually wanted to go to public comment. If there was any public comment on this item, please raise your hand. I'm looking. We still have 45 participants. Anyone want to make public comment on this item? Ms. Pappin? Oh, we lost, did we lose Ms. Pappin? Anyone else? Phone number ending in 793? Would you like to make a public comment? Seeing no public comment, I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Benia.
Yes, Drew, you mentioned the eviction moratorium. Do we have any idea what the unemployment rate might be in our locality at all, in the county or anything? Is there any way to get any actual reliable information out of the EDD?
We can, we can check. We can look into that. But I don't, I don't know off the top of my head what the, what the current unemployment rate in the county is.
Yeah, the, the reason I ask, of course, is that that could have something to do with, you know, how many people are not able to pay their rent. And, and I want to make sure we don't just let that pass. I think that's a discussion we, we probably should have. Because it's my feeling that a lot of people aren't back to work yet. But I don't know. So. Anybody else want to discuss that?
Unemployment's 11%.
Unemployment's still kind of high there.
Is that a, sorry, is that a national or a local number?
That's the county.
Okay.
I want to think about that some more while I go to Ms. Pappin. Go ahead, Ms. Pappin.
Okay, hi. Okay. I was just saying that I think the city's done a wonderful job with the restaurants and the hairdressers. I just want to, and also the schools at King Center. I think that you've done a wonderful job in helping the San Mateo Foster City School District meet their needs for their students. My granddaughter goes to a private school, Serendipity School. They were in the news, Channel 5 News. And I would like people to take some opportunities like they have at the public library by doing studies outside to look at some of the things that they've done at Serendipity School. The person who runs the school is an Aragon High School graduate. And I just want to say that I think that the San Mateo Foster City School grounds could implement some of those situations on their, on their school sites. Thank you again for working and keeping people employed downtown area. And I would encourage people to try to get re, re-educate, re-employed at things that they're not used to doing. There's a lot of jobs in the retail.
Thank you, Ms. Pappin. Thank you very much.
This is James Moore, Councilwoman Pappin. Did you have a question about outdoor printing?
Yes.
I stepped away for a moment.
Councilmember Pappin had a question about what's going on outside. Go ahead, Councilmember Pappin.
Thank you. That, it wasn't, it wasn't too complex a question. I just didn't know how it was working. Are you using the side enclosed patios or is it just right in front of the building? Or how is that working, James?
Yeah, so they, it has been set up on the side enclosed patios. The introduction of printing is very new, so I can't explain the technical aspects of it, except that I think it could be set up to send, to send the print jobs wirelessly. And then the librarians out there are going inside to retrieve the print jobs. But yes, the tables have been set up on the side of the building, not on the patio, but near the elevator where it is shaded. Initially, the program, the pilot started right around the time the air quality deteriorated badly and it didn't go very well. But lately, since the smoke has cleared, we've been seeing, at least on the last two or three events, about six people taking advantage of it. And that's with pretty limited marketing. So we want to pick up the marketing and we think that it could be a good thing as long as the weather holds up with an idea that we may be able to move some of these services inside of the library in the lobby. inside of the library in the lobby and try something like that before the end of the year because we know the weather is going to turn.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, James. Thank you, Councilmember Pappin, for keeping James on his toes. Okay, final comments from the council. Does everyone agree to everything that Drew is doing? Sound good?
Well, I want to, I want to compliment Drew on keeping a lot of balls in the air with a great staff that's able to really multitask and do a lot of things that were maybe never their job before. And, and including volunteers helping with the census. This is amazing. I want to mention to any members of the public that are listening that may be concerned about the eviction moratorium. The next council meeting is October 5th. If you're having an issue about this, you should write us an email or a letter. I think we need to know. Thanks.
Same thing with landlords. If landlords are having any trouble paying, paying their mortgages or something like that, please send us your information. Let us know that you're having trouble and, and give us the opportunity to address it. Drew, do you need us to pass a formal motion declaring an emergency?
To affirm, yeah, if you could, if we could vote on affirming the continued need for the emergency declaration.
Great.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Okay, there we go. We have a motion from Councilmember Pappin, a second from Councilmember Benia, and we'll do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Pappin?
Yes.
Councilmember Benia?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Jevdi Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Gothol.
Yes, that passes unanimously. Keep it up, Drew. We appreciate it very much. Moving on to item number 20, number 21, and we will welcome in Kathy Kleimbahn. Hi, Kathy.
Hey, thank you for having me tonight. So let me just get my screen shared. Are you seeing my presentation in presentation mode?
We are. We see all of your slides along the left-hand side.
Okay, now you're seeing it in presentation mode.
Yes, yes, we are. Yes, we are.
Perfect. All right. So tonight I'm going to go over our outdoor dining program extension. I have many decision points that I'll be putting in front of the council tonight related to this topic. So as background, as you may recall, as a result of COVID-19, right now restaurants are currently limited to take out an outdoor dining service only. As Drew mentioned in his presentation, the situation is pretty fluid. There's a possibility that limited indoor dining may be permitted very soon, maybe as soon as Wednesday of this week. We don't know. The council did direct staff to close portions of B Street for outdoor dining in June and also at the same time authorize the use of parking spaces for outdoor dining parklets. These have been incredibly popular. The city has provided a combination of water-filled and metal barricades to any restaurant that wants it upon request, not just in the downtown but throughout the city. And at the present time, the city is covering all the expenses of these barricades as well as the staff costs to adjust them as needed. So the street closures were authorized by a resolution as a temporary closure and that resolution is termed to expire October 19th. We did do a survey of the businesses and there's very strong interest in extending the closure through the winter. I will say right now, currently there's two full blocks of B Street that are closed. The ones between first and second, second and third, and then there's a single lane closure on B Street between Baldwin and First. The use of these street closures has been somewhat uneven. The block between first and second on B Street has much lower usage than the other blocks. However, when we initially started the street closures, we had that block open and it does create a very confusing traffic pattern. So there is some safety concerns if the council were to decide to reopen a portion of the streets that are currently closed at this point in time, if there's not consecutive streets, if there's a patchwork pattern. Staff is recommending based on the restaurant's interests and the continued public health emergencies to extend the temporary street closures through March first. Beyond that, they become less temporary and additional sequel analysis would be needed to evaluate the impact of these street closures. And it wouldn't be considered a temporary closure. It would be more of a ongoing closure for consideration. Sorry, let me get to the next slide. So for our parklet program, we have roughly 55 parklets that are scattered throughout the city. The majority are in the downtown, but they are in other commercial districts, including on 25th Avenue, someone Palm. There's also a very strong interest from the restaurants in retaining these street closures through the end of this sort of public health crisis, although some even want to continue them well beyond. Parklets have been something we've always thought about and experimented with at times in the downtown. And I think a lot of restaurants now that they have a chance to try them really want to see them as more of a permanent fixture in our downtown. As I mentioned, the city is currently providing the barricades that we are using, which are a combination of the metal and water-filled barricade. Unfortunately, we've had a couple of recent traffic accidents where thankfully nobody was hurt, but the accidents did sort of knock over the metal barricades and resulted in damage to the parklets and knocked over the shade structures and knocked over tables. And that has led staff to believe that we need stronger safety precautions in place. And we would recommend replacing those metal barricades with water-filled barricades. The cost of this upgrade is a net additional cost of close to $112,000 just through March of this next year. And that money isn't currently budgeted and would require an additional appropriation of funds. The council, back in June, adopted our temporary outdoor dining guidelines. These guidelines provided restaurants with permit options using the city barricades. We have had many restaurants start to winterize their parklets. And unfortunately, I think there's been a bit of an under, a misunderstanding with the restaurants where they thought once they had a permit, which were intended to provide for using the city barricades so they could do whatever they wanted within the space. And so we had intended that anyone that constructed their own parklet would first submit their plans to the city for review. That hasn't been happening in practice. These parklets haven't sort of been constructed just on their own. Sometimes they just pop up overnight or over the weekend. We are working really hard with the restaurants to correct for some key safety issues and also to try to get plans on records that we have information on what is actually supposed to be in place. There are some features that are of concern. For example, the state guidelines for what outdoor dining allows, if they can't be enclosed on three sides. So a lot of the parklets are sort of building up and they're fully walled in, whether it's through screens or, or other panels. And we think those don't really comply with the state guidelines. We also have some concerns about some of the roofs that are being built. We want to make sure that they're structurally sound and that they can withstand the wind because we do have windy streets. So we're really working to make sure that these can be safe in the short term. And we are in the process of developing guidelines for longer-term parklet installation. So if the council would like to see parklets remain past March, we hope to have guidelines developed by the end of this month that would provide standards of what, what these should look like. And they would allow for things like stormwater drainage underneath the parklets and provide more guidance on what the rails need to be and the ADA accessibility for the platforms and all sorts of really critical, important things. So the current outdoor dining guidelines that were previously adopted allow the parklets through December 1st. Given again, the ongoing pandemic and the interest in the restaurants in keeping them, we definitely recommend extending this through March 1st of the year and for the city to continue providing barricades throughout this time. The total cost to the city of that is $200,000, so it is not a small amount. Once we hit March, staff recommends that we require restaurants between now and then to have obtained permits for built parklets, which would provide their own sort of safety traffic control measures that would be provided by the restaurants. These are things like wheel stops, things that are more attractive than the orange-filled water barricades that we currently have. And for the restaurants to have the responsibility of the cost of these protective measures that can allow a parklet to stay longer term. We wouldn't charge this during COVID, but it is important to note that most parklet programs in other cities like San Francisco that's had parklets for a long time, there's typically an annual fee that is charged to the restaurants for use of the public right of way. And this can typically offset not all, but at least a portion of the meter revenue that's lost. The meter revenue for each parking space, depending on what the parking charges are, add up fast. You know, it can be $15 to $20 per day, which on a monthly basis and a yearly basis can generate a significant loss for a city. So we have a number of items for the council tonight. These are the items where your guidance is requested and I'll, I'll list these out, but we'll come back to them. And then we also have some action items that we'll also ask you to take tonight, which relate to this guidance. So the first request is if you support the extension to March 1st, 2021, which includes both the street closures and the parklets. Is there any interest in adjusting which streets remain closed or should we stick with the current ones that we have? Is the council interested in exploring a longer-term street closure beyond the COVID period? If so, we would need to do some sequel analysis to allow for that. And that might be something that happens seasonally or it could be something that could be year-round. Do you support the staff recommendation to upgrade to water-filled barricades for increased safety for our parklet program? After March, should the city, should we do as staff proposes and have the restaurants be responsible for the safety measures for their parklets? Or would you want the city to continue providing these water-filled barricades? And more generally, is there interest in having a parklet program after the COVID emergency has passed? So I went through this quickly. We can come back to address them one by one.
No, it's super easy. It's yes, no, yes, 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 yes. It was, I mean, it was obvious, wasn't it? I was following along.
The actions required of you tonight, if you want to extend the street closures, we would need you to pass the resolution extending those. We had the wrong date there, sorry, March 2021. We also would need you to pass a resolution appropriating additional money to the city manager's office to cover the expense of the water-filled barricades if we're going to upgrade to those for safety. And also we need authorization to actually procure these barricades from B and M Traffic Services. And the total cost of the barricades is just under $182,000.
Is that in addition to the 200,000 you already mentioned?
The 200,000 also includes other costs. So we have insurance that we're covering for the parklet program. So that makes up kind of most of the difference up to 200,000. So with that, I can bring it back for council discussion and maybe leave it on this slide if that would help.
Great. Can we coordinate a photo op with the Chamber of Commerce with one of those big checks? And be holding it for all the businesses that have parklets?
Absolutely.
I mean, we, we get some of those checks, but we've never like given one of those checks to the business community. That'd be kind of fun. Are there, are there questions before we go to the public comment? Seeing none, I'll go to the public comment. Cheryl Angeles, welcome to the conversation. Cheryl, you're, you're first. Go ahead.
Thank you. So again, Mayor, City Attorney and Councilmembers, I really appreciate the city looking into this and taking this very seriously. As you know, I've had many, many phone calls from businesses, but especially the restaurant community. And I love that idea, Mayor Gothol's, of presenting a check and making it a big deal. I think they would really appreciate that, but the chamber is in total support of extending this outside dining until at least March of 2021 and, and possibly longer period. I participated in the census parade on Sunday, as did Mayor Gothol's and Councilwoman Pappin and Councilwoman Lee. And we were driving past, we were on First and B Street. And to see the diners sitting out there laughing and waving at us was a pure, it was very delightful. So thank you for your consideration. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Rayan Motashemi?
Yes, that was, that was actually pretty good pronunciation. Thank you, Mayor Gothol's. So yeah, so I just wanted to comment, I came to this meeting specifically for this agenda item. And I just wanted to say that I fully support this program. And I'm, I'm admittedly not a resident of San Mateo, but I live just one house over from San Mateo. And I like downtown San Mateo is the main place that I go for, you know, like just what I do in my downtown. And I just wanted to like go back on some of the words that all of you council people had mentioned actually when you talked about tobacco. And that was that, I think Deputy Mayor Rodriguez had said, if you could prevent a handful of kids from dying, this would be worth it. Mayor Gothol's, you said you were, you, you know, supported the tobacco ordinance because it's a highly addictive poison that kills people. And the truth is that cars, they do a very similar thing. There are 30,000 traffic deaths from automobile accidents. Of course, we get utility from cars and transportation, but there's also 100,000 people who die from air pollution, of which auto emissions are a major source. And that's why I support, in addition to the economic benefits from making our downtown lively, I support a program that reduces our dependence on cars and vehicles and makes our downtown spaces that are supposed to be these places of public interaction in addition to going just for, you know, economic activity as making it like an attractive place to be. And if you're interested also in improving safety, I would encourage considering more road closures because we need these road closures to prevent the kinds of accidents. You can create heavier parklets, et cetera, to prevent damage from happening. But the truth is, the only way that you can ensure people don't die from a 40 mile per hour, two-ton vehicle barreling through this place that people are trying to enjoy their dinner is by creating, you know, streets where cars cannot pass through. And I, that's why I really support, we should evaluate the road closures, the impacts after March 2020. We should be closing streets in our downtown, making them pedestrian only and making them, designing them well so that they can be truly nice places. So.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your public comments and we'll move on to Adam Loren.
Thank you, council and staff. Good evening. I, I'll start by just saying plus one to what almost everything the last gentleman just said for public comment. I'm, I'm behind this. I think in general, it's been a great success so far, at least anecdotally. I feel like I, you know, I haven't done my own study on this, but I've been hearing from neighbors, from business owners downtown. And, and I can sort of see that, you know, people using it. And it, it just feels, personally, it feels civilized. I appreciate this, especially the, the closed streets. I, I think it's, you know, it's quiet. We had the, we have music going on there. It's, it's wonderful. So so far, so great. In that spirit, I would support extensions. To the last gentleman's point, if there are other streets that are interested in becoming closed and, and the council is interested, I would be in favor of this longer term. I, I do, I feel want to be a little sensitive to how much it would cost to upgrade to water barricades and, and continue this program. As I know, we're, we were talking earlier about a shortfall. We have Measure W that's supposed to, you know, help us bridge the gap. And, and I realize there are a lot of other things that could use money right now. I do feel like this is money well spent and I'm just going to optimistically show my support for this and, and hope that we can find a way to, to make it work because I do think we're seeing benefits. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Adam. Gabe Lucas?
Hi, thank you so much. I'm here in support of the parklet program. I run a small business at 411 B Street and live downtown. I often walk to work and I really enjoy my commute. It's great. But I also do drive through the downtown corridor. And it took me about two days to get used to the impact on traffic and now I'm really enjoying it. And me and my family are seeing a significant economic benefit that has allowed me to hire back four employees. That's all I have to say.
Great story. Thank you so much for sharing. I appreciate that, Mr. Lucas. Great story. Thank you so much for sharing. I appreciate that, Mr. Lucas. Michael Nash.
Good evening, everyone. I just thought I'd mention that I personally support this program. But it's also true that the officers of San Mateo United agree that this is a program that would like to see proceeding. We've been working with the Downtown San Mateo Association on ways to encourage more participation in the outdoor dining program. I think the extension that's proposed and the safety enhancements that are proposed will provide the appropriate environment to do that. So we support it and thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael Nash, President Nash, on to Michael Weinauer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the councils. I just wanted to echo the three previous speakers' comments really for the most part. And I thank staff and the council for dealing with this and, and, and working flexibly and fluidly with a, with a very fluid and unprecedented situation that, that they're dealing with. So I, I support all these things, extending it, considering expansion of the streets that remain closed. I couldn't agree more than with what Rand said, that we need to, this is an opportunity to rethink and reimagine our downtown and make it more robust and unique and, and make it even a bigger draw than, than it already is. And, you know, the converse of that is if we don't do this stuff and keep the parklets in place, we'll be seeing a very different outcome and, and it's not a good one. I think the very survival of these businesses depends on it. So, um, so yeah, we have a hundred percent support it and a great job so far. Thank you.
For the record, I will say that I completely agree with what Michael Weinauer just said. Adam, Adam Nugent, Adam?
Adam Simpson.
Adam Simpson, excuse me, sorry. Adam Simpson. Talk to me about parklets. How do you feel, Adam?
Yeah, so this is Adam from Worstall. Parklets have been our lifeline. We're maintaining about fifty percent revenues, which is enough for us to see another day and hopefully get through COVID. We are still not profitable, probably. A little more data will tell that. But the one or the couple of things that I encourage, if we do extend through March first, not to let our guard down and make sure and be aggressive about long-term plans and working hand in hand with public works so that we have a good understanding of what that would be. Everything right now breaks down into economics of building a parklet and winterizing things. And there's been a bunch of tenants that have already done that. We've been waiting very patiently to get a clear understanding of what the permits that would be required to do such build out. But it's very hard to hold back when it's getting colder and colder and colder. And that is our only way to sustain sales. So we don't want to build something that we have to take down in March first. We want to build something that, well, if we have to take it down, excuse me, if we have to take it down March first, we want to know that we're going to have to take it down at March first so that we know how much money we can spend to be able to justify it. But if it goes beyond March first, it'd be wonderful to know so that we can put a little bit more effort into it and, and money into it to be able to make it more robust for the downtown community. But I do appreciate everything that the city has done so far. Like I said, it's been the only thing that's been able to sustain our business. So thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you so much for those comments, Adam. And Adam, Worstall has one of the more successful parklets that we're very proud of in San Mateo and that we want to see continued. I don't see any other hands. I'm going to close the public comment period, bring you back to the council. And I, I'll start. I want to reiterate a couple of things. Number one, I think it enhances the downtown. I think the overwhelming majority of people in San Mateo absolutely love it. They love the experience of walking around downtown San Mateo. I'm, I'm not yet prepared to compare our downtown to the Spanish Steps of Rome, but people love our downtown. So we need to keep it, we need to enhance it. The second thing that I wanted to say was, it was mentioned a couple of times that, that this is significantly costly. This is an expensive thing for the city to invest in. And to that I would say, yes, but this keeps people employed, this saves jobs. When the city council raised the minimum wage, the, the, the restaurants said, when are you ever there for us? And, and we have consistently said, we are always there for you. We want you to stay in business. We support all of our restaurants. We support all of our businesses downtown. And so this is, this is us keeping that promise. Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to make one, one comment. I mean, I have, I have many, but, you know, if there was ever, if there's going to be one thing to good that's come from this COVID epidemic, I think it will be that this is the year that we became empowered to activate public space that was previously reserved for cars. And whether it be our, our closing down B Street, whether it be the parklets, the safe streets, I, I really feel we cannot waste this opportunity. We have to think longer term. And when we look back on this, it will be the, the one good memory we have of this closed down is that this got something that we've been talking about for years. And it got it moving, it got it going. And low and behold, it seems like everybody loves it. I mean, go figure. So let's, let's move, let's think long term. And we can go over all these different questions and I, I think that'll be interesting. But I just encourage us to think long term and to think about reimagining our downtown.
Awesome. Any, any final comments before we go to the questions? Councilmember Pappen?
I, I would just concur. I, I, I was in downtown Saturday night and it was alive and open for business, I will tell you. And, and it just felt great. And you compared it to a European city. It, it, it really had that feel for me. So I, I concur that low and behold, everybody does like it. So I, I'm pleased that, that COVID allowed us to get out there on it. I'm ready to go through the questions.
Okay, last chance. Go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
Yes, so I just, I, I concur with everything, you know, all the praise. This is undeniably, you know, very successful. I would just say, you know, I think it's, I, I was so glad Kathy for, you know, for us to acknowledge. I think that there has been some misunderstandings about, about the process and about the requirements. And, and I think that this is a time for us to show a great deal of flexibility and fluidity as we, you know, we need to be partners to our businesses. And, and things like, you know, the way that we define an enclosed space, I don't consider, you know, a screen to be or, or a cloth panel to be an enclosed space. And so I think that, you know, when we're talking about those definitions of, of built out spaces that we're, you know, that we're being, we're being open minded and flexible and putting safety first. I don't, you know, from, from the health perspective, I, I just, I don't think that there's a strong justification for us to, to, to impose onerous requirements that are, you know, overly stringent that would, that would require businesses to make significant modifications. And so, and so if, if there are situations where we can grandfather some of the existing permitted or the existing unpermitted parklets in and, and show a great deal of flexibility from our side, given that there were no clear guidelines, I would be strongly supportive of that. And with that said, I, I'm ready to go through the, the bullet points.
I do want to clarify a point which I didn't go over, which I really should have covered in my presentation. So I, I do think our intention for the time being is to grandfather in as much as we can for what's currently built and the winterization efforts that have been made by the businesses. We may need to work with some of them to make some adjustments to make sure it's safe. But we, we do plan at least through this time period, especially in the heart of winter, to let them keep these roofs and structures. But I think when we're looking longer term at what parklets like Adam Simpson's comment about what we want to allow to be there permanently, if you think, and I have pictures here, which I didn't go over on this slide. If you look at these parklets, these are actually pre-existing ones from San Francisco that were in place long before COVID and this public health emergency. Most existing parklets are really basically a platform with three foot rails. And I think when we're looking longer term and what people can keep long term, this is what's really been determined to be safe. You know, parklets aren't really intended outside of this COVID public health emergency to provide comfortable dining throughout the winter in the outdoors. And this is, you know, a lot safer from a traffic perspective. So we will be working to create guidelines that encourage people that want to have parklets beyond. Maybe they can build something temporary where a roof can be removed after the COVID emergency. I'm sure there's lots of creative solutions, but I think when we're looking at the longer term guidelines, we want to sort of get back to what's a traditional parklet beyond the COVID public health emergency.
So I have a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
For Kathy. You mentioned three foot guardrails. And I think that that's basically the purpose that in the parklets you were just showing, it looked like they had some of those barricades there and they were kind of serving, serving as that. When I look at some of the barracks of the parklets that some people have built around town, I don't see full height walls. I do see basically guardrails. I don't think I actually see maybe some cloth or some kind of screening or something hanging there in some places. But I'm wondering, you know, people should be entering and exiting from the sidewalk. And so to the extent that you need something, especially if there's a platform that looks like it's built like that one on the top in this photo, that levels the, the area you're walking on. If somebody walks off the end of that and there's no guardrail there, you know, just a, a distance of one inch could cause somebody to stumble, not to mention down by the curb, three or four or five inches. So I think we should be careful. There should be some kind of railing around three sides on that. And, and I don't know if that was what you were talking about or not.
So what I was, I'm sorry for that it wasn't clear. So yes, absolutely, parklets have railings around three sides, but those should be at three feet of height above the platform. What I was referring to is some of the parklets that have built have essentially walled themselves off on three sides, like almost up to the roof. And it, in, you know, to Councilmember Lee's point, it really depends on the material. You know, like tent material, some people have like put full tents with three sides down. That's not open air, right?
I see that, yeah.
So there, there's that situation that we need to be careful about. That just because it's outside doesn't mean it meets the state's intention for outdoor dining. And we're working really closely to make sure that we're doing that. And we, we also do have some concerns about rails that are higher than three feet because it really does reduce visibility and sight lines. So the one parklet that was hit that someone was actually in at the time, they were able to see the car coming and get out of the way. But if they were sitting behind five foot walls, they wouldn't have known what happened until they were already hit. So there, there's just a lot of safety measures that we're really trying to do our best to make sure we're balancing competing needs. And again, we may allow things during this time period that if we're looking to have a parklet stay in place for two, three, five years after, we wouldn't recommend.
So my question goes kind of to the extension though through March. There's going to be winter. There's going to be some rain. And if they don't have some covering and maybe something to keep the rain from blowing in on you, what's the thought? Because that area, that space will be out of business if that's the case.
Well, we're going again to allow some of these to occur. The most ideal circumstance is when people use umbrellas and pop-up tents. You know, the rain blowing is, is a problem we can't really resolve for unless you're in.
And umbrellas blow away in the winter, so.
They blow away if they're on really windy days or if they're not, you know.
Yeah.
It can be closed on really windy days. But, you know, it is still outdoor dining. We can't make outdoors indoors and still meet the state's health guidelines. So it's a challenge. We want to make it comfortable for most of the days, but there's going to be days where no one's going to want to eat outdoors. And there's unfortunately nothing left to do about that.
So can I just ask a clarifying question? So you're, it sounds like what you're saying is that the, the, that during the health order, if, if the businesses meet the safety threshold, that there, there won't be any further modifications required and that they will be grandfathered in. After the, is that correct, number one?
They'll be allowed to continue. Grandfathering, I don't want to indicate that if they build a roof now, that after March first, if the roof is still up, that they'll be able to keep it if they want to have a parklet for three years beyond this.
Okay, so then you're seeing sort of after March first, then the guidelines with the lower height, the lower wall height and the, the, the minimal rooftop canopy options will apply? Is that?
So the, you know, so the wall height is actually for us really important right now. Because we do think that it's really critical to meet the state's safety standards and for really important visibility. And most of the restaurants actually have walls that are thirty-six and below. And the ones that had taller ones, most of them have corrected for that. There's, I think, maybe only one or two that haven't, but me, you know, posed that safety issue, a lot of restaurants went out right away and fixed that. The roofs are something we may allow from now through March first, but after March first, if people want to, and March first is a little bit of a tentative date, I mean, assuming that we're beyond the worst of this in March first, who knows? But, you know, past COVID, if people want to maintain parklets, we're not going to have roof parklets. That, that would be staff's strong recommendation that we have more traditional style parklets like you see in other cities. And there may be ways to design one that you can have a roof for now. And then the roof comes off and you can retain, you know, the rest of what you've put into it for the longer term.
At the risk of turning this into an episode of Park and Rec, I'm going to try to get us to the questions. Do you support the extension to March first, 2021? Council, what say you?
Yes.
Yes, so we are unanimous on that. Should we adjust which streets remain closed? I'm good with what we have right now.
Yeah, I think there's, there's some merit to consistency right now. And like they mentioned, the sort of hodgepodge makes it confusing to a driver. So for those reasons, I say we, we stay the course at this moment.
Yeah, I'm good with that too.
I'm, I'm fine with that too. I would say, you know, my only question mark is B between first and second. Do we, does it make sense to turn that into just a west side closure? That's, that's my only thought, but I'm not married to it at all, just from a circulation standpoint. And it's a very underutilized space at this point.
Okay, we will encourage greater utilization. Is there interest in exploring a longer term street closure or a seasonal street closure after the COVID emergency has passed? I see, yes, yes, yes.
It will have to be analyzed. It may need to be different after COVID passes, like Kathy was inferring.
Yes, yes, but I think we, I think the answer to the question is yes, and do your analysis and then we'll figure that out afterwards. Councilmember Pappen, did you have something additional?
Just go back to the B Street one real quick. If there is.
First and second.
Yeah, yeah. If the east side is not being used, I, I would like to propose perhaps having some other restaurants be able to, to, you know, maybe service that area, have some tables set up there where, where they could bring, it might be a hard, difficult to get it, you know, from their location to there. But let's just somehow explore it because not every restaurant is getting the advantage of having some outdoor seating or at least that area along B Street. So maybe a really utilization of it if that east side isn't quite good. I just want to throw that out there. We don't have to decide anything tonight, but.
Nope, that's a great comment. Good addition. Moving on, should city upgrade to water filled barricades for the parklet program? Any dissenters?
So if we're going to explore a longer term street closure, do you want us to study the current closure that's in place? Or would you like to maybe limit that to maybe, I don't know, for example, B Street between second and third or?
Yeah, I'm in favor of that.
Of which?
It was an org.
Yeah, basically between second and third.
Question. I would study the larger, but.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna kind of go, I think where the mayor was going. Is there any downside to studying the larger, knowing that we're not doing anything? We're just studying it. We can look at the whole thing and then always downsize it if it doesn't make sense.
There's always an incremental cost, but I'm sure it's not that much.
I, I like looking at as much of B Street as possible.
Including Baldwin.
Forgive me, I want to give it back to the deputy mayor. I thought, I saw a pause and I jumped in.
No, I was just going to say the same thing. It, it's, it's like, I, I think we, we can always swing for the fences and then always. No, I, I was just going to say the same thing. It, it's, it's like, I, I think we, we can always swing for the fences and then always, uh, kind of go back. If, if it doesn't look like it's going to work because it might not work. I mean, I think that we're, we're on a good path right now, but I just don't want to sell ourselves short. Because of how long it took us to even get to this spot we are right now.
So I just want to mention that if COVID does recede. And we start to see more normal commerce downtown, we still don't have that new seven hundred space parking garage built. In parking, if business comes back more robustly, will be an issue. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
And that's exactly why I think we need to study it.
Yeah.
Kathy, you have your answer.
Thank you.
So studying all closed streets that currently exist, including Baldwin. Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, water-filled barricades, yes?
Yeah, for safety, I am.
Safe for the better. Safe for the better. Yes, please. Should the city, uh, da, 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 provide the water-filled barricades beyond March 1st, 2021?
I was looking for guidance. You know, our initial staff recommendation was that. We give restaurants a lot of time to put their own safety measures in place. And then after March, we would be able to return the barricades and, and stop incurring. The roughly two hundred thousand. Dollar cost.
I think that's enough time to give them to figure out, uh, just like Adam Simpson was mentioning. They need to figure out what this is going to cost them, how much the investment is worth to them. I think that's the, the right amount of time to transfer the costs to the restaurants that are using it.
Can I, can I ask you a question? Would it be possible for, for them to incur the cost of the barricades as part of the permitting process if they wanted that option?
Absolutely. I am thinking though, long term, when you look at the parklets like in San Francisco, they're not surrounded by ugly orange barricades. So we would love to get to.
How do you find them if they don't have the big orange ugly barricade?
So we know what ballards are, Kathy.
Yeah.
Would we consider allowing them to put in some of their own ballards?
Much like a neon sign. Deputy Mayor Rodriguez, Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
I just wanted to add, you know, I don't know if it's, if it's that common anymore, but I remember seeing it before where there were, there were barriers. And it didn't seem like the restaurant was using the space. Um, and it, it's, it almost appeared as though. Um, we went up to them and said, hey, do you want us to mark off the space and it won't cost you anything? And we said, and they said, yes, of course. If we want free ice cream, yeah, we want free ice cream. Uh, but if they're not, it, it, have we done any studies? To, to make sure that if we're going to be incurring these costs, that there are, they're doing their best, uh, effort to make sure that they're utilizing them and having tables out there. Cause I've, I've seen some ones out there during business hours that didn't even have tables out there. So. I just want to make sure that we're spending, if we're going to be making this investment, which I'm very much in favor of, that we're just, we're not throwing any money away that we don't have to.
We have been really closely monitoring it and really working with businesses to constantly be readjusting the, the size of them. If businesses aren't using them and businesses sometimes decide not to and then decide to use them after a while, but we are on it.
Awesome. Thanks.
Yes.
Councilmember Benia?
Yeah, thanks. Regarding the, uh, big orange barriers. Um, you know, there is a way that might be more attractive. We should consider allowing, um, or think about whether we want to do this. But I mean, ballards could be put in place by the owners, the kind that just bolt down to the pavement. The, you know, metal pipes, four feet high or three feet high, that, uh, give protection where it's needed. Have we thought about?
Yes.
Yeah.
So those are in the guidelines that were in the process of.
Okay, good.
Good comment. Excellent. And I'm on the final question of this page. Is there interest in having a parka program for after the COVID emergency has passed? I don't see any no's. I don't see any no's.
Well, well, I just have a question.
Lots of support.
Like I mentioned earlier.
I don't hear anything. I hear nothing right now. Go ahead, Rick. Go ahead. I'm just kidding.
Pandemics come and pandemics go. We've seen them throughout history. Okay, so what if, like I said earlier, it recedes and we need to have parking because we don't have sufficient parking structures?
We should study that.
Yeah. Okay. That's what I'm saying. We need to look at it.
Kathy, do you have all the direction you need for this slide of your presentation?
I have the direction I need and I need you to take the actions.
Moving on, uh, is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing extension of temporary street closures through March 1st, 2020, 21?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have moved in a second. It was moved by the deputy mayor and the former mayor Pappan and then seconded by Rick Benia. Uh, all those, if they respond to Patrice Halls?
Councilmember Pappan?
Aye.
Councilmember Bonia?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Goto?
Aye. And, and I think that was, well, Deputy Mayor Rodriguez also moved that into, like, there was lots of moving. Uh, is there a motion to approve the resolution appropriating one hundred eleven thousand five hundred dollars to the city manager's office budget to cover the expense of the water-filled barricades?
No move.
Second.
Motion is second. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
I'm sorry, I missed the motion in second. I thought this was one motion.
It should be one motion. So we're going to add to that authorizing the, the city manager to procure water-filled barricades from D and M Traffic Services for an amount not to exceed one hundred eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please call roll.
We already took roll. So if it's all one motion, we just did it.
Oh, great. Okay. So that was all part of the motion and it was approved.
Thank the city clerk.
It was, uh, if I could make a point that as it was written on your agenda is how it should be read and it was read as one motion.
Okay.
Unanimous.
He was just breaking it out so you could see it.
Perfect. That was unanimous. Um. Kathy, thank you for that and we look forward to seeing you next time. Uh, that's it for that item.
Mr. Mayor?
We're on the final item. Yes.
Yeah, I need a five minute break.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Let's take a five minute break and then we'll come back for Andrea's beautiful presentation. Beck, Andrea, please. We're on item number twenty-two, building electrification reach codes. New business ordinance introduction. We see your presentation. It looks beautiful.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Goto and members of the city council. My name is Andrea Chown. I'm the sustainability analyst for the city of San Mateo. On July twentieth, city council discussed different policy options to encourage or require building electrification and new construction. Tonight, we will review two alternate proposed ordinance options to meet city council's direction. I will go into detail about these two options, but these ordinances are structured so that council will just select one ordinance for adoption. First, a very brief overview of building electrification and reach codes. Building electrification refers to the construction of all electric buildings. These buildings are constructed without natural gas surfaces, so they rely on electric appliances and systems for space heating. Water heating, clothes drying and cooking. There's been more attention on building electrification because we are very fortunate to have peninsula clean energy in our region. That plans to provide one hundred percent GHG free electricity by 2021 and one hundred percent renewable by 2025. So our electricity is very clean here. On the other hand, natural gas is a fossil fuel and there will always be greenhouse gas emissions associated with natural gas. The city is very familiar with reach codes because we have used this approach to help meet our climate goals in the past. In short, reach codes are local amendments to the state energy code. And I'd like to remind the council of a few different legal requirements associated with adopting reach codes. Reach codes must be cost effective. They must be at least as stringent as the state energy code. And they must be approved by the California Energy Commission. In order for the city to adopt reach codes, we must also adopt local climatic, geological or topographical conditions that render the amendment necessary. And then finally, reach codes expire every three years in alignment with the state's building code. So the 2019 code cycle already began January 1 of this year and will end on December 31st of 2022. So any reach codes we adopt now will end at the end of that code cycle. At the July twentieth city council meeting, staff presented policy options to encourage or require building electrification. In new multifamily residential buildings. Staff also asked for feedback on whether there was interest to revise the city's already adopted reach codes. That encourage building electrification in single family and duplex homes and buildings with office use. City council directed staff to develop an ordinance that requires new multifamily residential buildings be all electric. The city council also directed staff to return for further consideration of revising the city's existing electric preferred reach codes. To require single family and duplex homes and buildings with office use be all electric. So staff developed two alternative ordinances to meet city council's direction. Both ordinances require that all new multifamily buildings be all electric. The difference includes that proposed ordinance number one will retain the city's adopted electric preferred reach codes as is. While proposed ordinance number two requires. That the single family duplex homes and office buildings be all electric in addition to all new multifamily residential buildings. So staff seek city council consideration and selection of one of the two proposed ordinances for adoption. And I will go into more detail. Starting with proposed ordinance number one. So again, proposed ordinance number one retains the already adopted electric preferred reach codes. The city adopted these reach codes in 2019 and they went into effect January 1 of this year. The city's adopted reach codes encourage building electrification by giving builders two options. Either building an all-electric building at the minimum efficiency as required by the energy code. Or building a mixed fuel building using electricity and natural gas at a higher energy efficiency than the energy code. So this approach is often termed the electric preferred reach code approach since it gives preference to all electric buildings. Our reach codes currently apply to single family duplex and buildings with office use. So in proposed ordinance number one, we would add a new requirement for all new multifamily residential buildings to be all electric. There is one exception to this new piece of the ordinance. The exception for this ordinance includes one hundred percent affordable housing projects would be exempt. This exception is a result of the July twentieth discussion and was a specific request from the council. Uh, that we exempt one hundred percent affordable housing projects. It should be noted that, uh, the city's mid pen affordable housing project will be able to go all electric. Okay. Proposed ordinance number two is different in that it requires. All new residential building, including single family duplex and multifamily residential buildings be electric. And buildings with office use also be electric. So this reach code replaces the city's adopted electric preferred reach codes. At the July twentieth meeting, we went into some more discussion about the challenges with all electric requirements. And to recap for you here, I think the main issue that came up among stakeholders is that there is. General consumer interest in gas cooking ranges in single family and duplex homes. Although there is a competitive induction stove technology. There's still huge customer demand for the gas cooking range. And stakeholders did not bring up any specific challenges related to electrifying office space. So much like ordinance number one, uh, new multifamily buildings are required to be all electric. But this ordinance goes a little bit further to replace our current reach codes. And require single family duplex and office buildings also be all electric. I think it, it's important to highlight that the ordinance focuses on commercial buildings with office use. This is for a couple of reasons. One is we wanted to focus the ordinance on the already impacted buildings by reach codes. And also because office space, uh, there were no identified challenges in electrifying office space during, uh, stakeholder outreach. Staff does not currently recommend a, a reach code that requires all electric construction of all other commercial uses. Such as retail hospital or manufacturing. Um, again, this is because we wanted to focus the ordinance on buildings that were already impacted. Uh, but also because there are more challenges and complexities related to other commercial uses. Uh, I think one prime example is that retail spaces are specifically challenging. Because they have a high turnover rate and often have different types of tenants. So while a retail space might start as a store, it might later become a restaurant. And that was another issue that was brought up as being the most challenging, uh, was electrifying commercial kitchens. So there, there is a commercial induction stove technology, but from what we learned from stakeholders, there's still a, a concern about restaurants being ready. Or chefs being ready for this transition. This ordinance has the same exceptions as ordinance number one. There is an exception for one hundred percent affordable housing as discussed previously. And then there's also a, uh, exception for. And then there's also an exception for accessory dwelling units. Even though ADUs are often built all-electric, given the state of California's recent focus on ADU construction, the city wanted to ensure there were no perceived barriers to ADU development. And similarly, when we adopted the electric preferred reach codes in August 2019, the city also exempted ADUs from the electric preferred reach codes. So we would propose retaining this exception. So the California Energy Commission requires local jurisdictions to file energy code reach codes and then wait a 60-day comment period. So following the City Council approval of one of the alternative proposed ordinances, staff would file the proposed amendments with the California Energy Commission and reply to any public comments as needed. If approved by the City Council and the CEC, the reach codes would go into effect January 1, 2021, and then would expire at the end of the building code cycle on December 31, 2022. And January 1 of next year was chose for two main reasons. One, the first being the ease of implementation. We wanted to make sure it's easy for staff to enforce on a date that was easy to remember. And then secondly, because we have to wait a comment period, it would be likely that we'd have to wait months until we could implement this ordinance. And then lastly, the city would have to re-adopt reach codes for future building cycles once these expire. So I will leave you with this closing slide so that you can review the proposed ordinance options. But staff is seeking City Council's selection of one of the two proposed ordinance options.
Okay. I'm going to jump straight to public comment. Raise your hand if you've got a public comment. Starting with Justin Wayne.
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, hi. My name is Justin. I live in San Mateo. I graduated with the class of 2020 from Aragon High School, and I'm a rising freshman at UC Santa Barbara. This is my first time speaking at a town hall, and I'm excited to share my thoughts. 2020 has been a terrible year. In addition to the pandemic, natural disasters are destroying property and claiming lives. Wildfires are tearing through California, as you know, and we've already gone through the whole alphabet for hurricane naming. And all fingers point to climate change. I was actually at Sugarloaf Peak earlier today, and I saw the Belmont Fire from there. And it's no exaggeration to say I'm kind of terrified about what the future has in store for me. And though I know the city of San Mateo has been great about environmental policies, I still want them to do more, you know, to adopt the strictest possible codes for buildings. I'm then a strong proponent of Proposed Ordinance Number Two. I want to see most buildings, new buildings in San Mateo with completely electric. It's recently, it's been hard to express how powerless I feel with the tempestuous climate that can conjure up a perfect storm that rips us out of our homes and takes lives without discretion, combined with corruption in our federal government that prefers to sit idly by while millions suffer, combined with a generation of kids who are broken by the heavy knowledge that they will grow up into a world of punishment. It feels sometimes that there's no end to it. And I feel sometimes to be a sinner in the hands of an angry god, firmly in the clutches of an omnipotent force that I can do little to fight back against. So when I see my city doing all it can to ameliorate the climate crisis, I can't thank you all enough. Thank you for your time.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you, Justin. You know, this is the place where you find people who don't despair, who actually stand up and want to do stuff. So speaking of people who want to do stuff and who fight hard for their climate in their city, Adam Lorraine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council and staff. Probably easiest plus-one of the previous comment I've done in quite some time. In addition, I just want to be clear, I also support Option Two. The language, to me, appears a touch weaker than what the county had done earlier. You know, in that I think like the county, for example, has a little bit more of a forward stance, going for electric, all buildings, and then spelling out some exceptions, and then having, for example, like asking for pre-wiring on top of it and making people state their case for going with gas. I would have preferred to see that, but it sounds like we're working within the framework we had before. And there are some other reasons. I'm a little surprised, a little disappointed by the exemption of ADUs, and I may not have realized that earlier in the previous code section. But especially because of this idea that there's a perceived barrier. You know, I think, I just would say I would look forward to revisiting this next cycle and see whether there's a real barrier or just a perceived one. If it's a perceived one, let's get rid of it. Overall, I'm pleased and appreciative of council and staff for not taking the path of least resistance and instead revisiting and revising two years of work on this for greater environmental progress and protection for all the reasons Justin said earlier. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And now let's hear from Menlo Sparks, Diane Bailey.
Well, good evening, Mayor Gothos and council members, and thank you so much for the opportunity to comment. My name's Diane Bailey, and I'm commenting today on behalf of the Campaign for Fossil-Free Buildings in Silicon Valley and our 33-member groups working together to accelerate a phase-out of fossil fuels from our homes and buildings. And plus-one to the excellent comments of Justin and Adam both. Here strongly in support of Option Two, an electric reach code for new construction in all sectors. And also respectfully want to ask you to remove the various exceptions, including affordable housing and ADUs in the various sectors. And I really want to thank the staff and also the commissioners for all the hard work they've put into this policy. This is really critical action to respond to the climate emergency that we're living in right now. Every breath of smoke that we inhaled this past summer is a reminder that we're in a climate crisis and also that San Mateo isn't just vulnerable to the five-fold increase of wildfires due to climate change, but our communities are also facing severe flooding and more intense heat waves and extreme weather disruptions. And we just can't put off action any longer to cut carbon and get off fossil fuels. And so you've heard a lot in past meetings about the deeply concerning climate health and safety impacts of fossil gas use. And I know you're very well aware of these. And so I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the exceptions and ask respectfully for your reconsideration, particularly of the exception for 100% affordable housing. This is a relatively new concept, and we know that it's very well-intentioned, but it creates a massive equity disparity between low-income families and those with greater means. And that's because allowing affordable housing projects to continue using dirty and dangerous fossil gas shifts all the safety risk and pollution onto the low-income families who move into those buildings. And that's compared to more affluent families who will be quickly transitioning away from polluting gas. And we know that as this shift occurs, that gas rates are expected to rise sharply, and that leaves residents of affordable housing paying disproportionately higher utility bills. So I just wanted to point out that I don't think that for fire or seismic safety standards that we would lower the standards for affordable housing or cut corners on safety. And I respectfully ask you to reconsider that and to really support affordable housing projects as they go through the process, help them get the technical assistance provided by PCE and avoid any blanket exception that cuts corners on safety for them. Ultimately, I hope you'll move swiftly to adopt Option Two without blanket exceptions, and I thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Diane. Dashiel Leeds.
Hello, my name is Dashiel Leeds. I'm the Conservation Assistant for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. We are in strong support of the reach code, Proposed Ordinance Number Two. And I would like to echo some of the previous comments before me, especially to remove some of the blanket exceptions. I think Diane covered a lot of it, and I'll just, I want to touch on what some of the other jurisdictions who have also looked at removing blanket exceptions have done, particularly San Mateo County, Cupertino and Mountain View. I think San Mateo County may be the most relevant for us here. But they actually had blanket exceptions in their first reading, and they motioned on the diocese on the day of the first reading to remove those blanket exceptions. And same with Cupertino and Mountain View. Those cities also motioned on the diocese to remove their blanket exceptions. So there's a lot of precedent for doing this, and I really hope that not only do you adopt Proposed Ordinance Number Two, but you adopt it with a motion to remove the blanket exceptions. And one thing that all of these jurisdictions, this ordinance included, have in common is the existence of an infeasibility exception. So if there was a situation where a proposed builder could not meet a certain requirement, these codes would be able to have the infeasibility exception to handle those specific instances. So the code is resilient even without the blanket exceptions.
Thank you.
And I would just, am I out of time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dashiel. Appreciate it. Elijah Lurie.
Thank you. So yeah, my name is Elijah, and I'm currently a senior in high school. I've grown up in the Bay Area, so I've experienced the effects of climate change, such as the near pitch-black smoky skies that we saw recently. And as a Bay Area resident, it pains me to see my close friends and community members at risk of losing their homes to erosion from sea level rise or from these worsening fires. It means so much to me that San Mateo is moving towards positive change by bringing up these reach codes. I support Ordinance Number Two because these stricter guidelines will do more to preserve our futures. My family, friends, and future San Mateo generations will thank you.
Thank you, Elijah. Robert White here.
Honorable Mayor Gothos, members of the council. First of all, I want to thank you for all that you do. You do a lot, and you did a lot tonight. I notice when you are listening to speakers and considering an item, you pay good attention, so I appreciate that. I want to thank too the staff for their diligent hard work considering all possible alternatives.
That was not your timer, Robert. Keep talking. That was not your timer. I'm sorry about that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And developing a stronger code. We absolutely need to reduce our dependence on fossil fuels and instead rely on renewable sources of energy. There is no transition period. A lot of others have already talked about natural gas and how it's methane and how dangerous it is, so I'll skip over that. Eliminating natural gas in new construction in San Mateo will eliminate at least 1.5 tons of carbon dioxide per year per new home for almost 300,000 tons over the lifetime of projects built in San Mateo in the next five years. Your decision tonight, I guess after what you've done on the wastewater treatment plant, will be one of the most impactful environmental decisions the current council will ever make. 300,000 tons of CO2 eliminated. I want to talk about the exemption for commercial kitchens. I don't think it's necessary as there are now hundreds, and I didn't know this, I started investigating, hundreds of commercial kitchens in California cooking with electric induction stoves. Electric induction cooktops are not the old electric coil stoves of yesteryear, the ones my wife and I cooked on and hated 50 years ago when we got married. We in our home now use all-electric cooking. We'll never go back to gas. Installing induction cooktops and electric ovens in new construction is a luxury, not a detriment. And then giving an exemption to ADUs, in my opinion, is not necessary. I have the same feelings about affordable housing that Diane does. And I just ask that if you do grant any exemptions, and I hope you don't, I ask that a record be kept of any exceptions to exemptions, and this be reported twice a year at the same time you report on PV installations and batteries. My wife and I have lived in San Mateo for 40 years, and now we always remember why, because it's such a wonderful city. By adopting Proposed Ordinance Number Two, you will continue that trend, and we'll be just as proud of San Mateo as we've always been. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Robert. And I'm going to go to phone number ending in 793.
Hi, this is Bruce Nagel. I live in Mountain View. I've lived in Mountain View for over 40 years. I definitely want to see the option number two going forward. I want to talk a little bit about some of the toxic effects of kitchens that are left on gas. One of the concerns is, and this is especially true in low-income housing, is there's a tremendous amount of nitrous oxide, nitrogen dioxide that gets created. Nitrogen dioxide is something that causes asthma. And in fact, places that have cooking on gas stoves, there's a 42% higher incidence of asthma in those households. So last thing you want to do is you take a kitchen that's smaller, you concentrate the fumes there, and so it's not a wonderful sight. The other thing is that one of the things that's happened to a town near you, San Bruno, was 10 years ago, there was a large explosion there. A couple of weeks ago, there was a smaller explosion in Los Altos. The gas infrastructure is not one that is sturdy, and whatever you can do to eliminate it all throughout, all the things, so even in the cooking, is going to be helpful. One of the challenges that faces PGN is they'd like to go all-electric. But if somebody puts gas in for cooking, then they have to, in essence, replicate that infrastructure. One of the big financial benefits of going all-electric is it eliminates one pipeline for energy into the system. So whatever you can do... Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. And last, Becky Schaff.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for taking my comment. My name is Becky Schaff, and I'm a San Mateo resident deeply concerned about the effects of climate change, and I appreciate the council's support for an all-electric reach code. Back in July, I shared my concerns about an all-electric reach code negatively affecting affordable housing, given that the cost impacts of all-electric construction vary from site to site based on factors such as the overall electrical infrastructure needs and how much solar the roof space can hold. I'd also like to clarify that gas cookstoves are not common in 100% affordable housing, and my main concerns are about cost impacts rather than cooking preferences. I'm glad to see that the proposed ordinance includes an exemption for affordable housing and ask for your support for the affordable housing exception. I don't anticipate that it will be necessary for all affordable housing properties, but having the exception is an important safeguard for properties that would face significant cost constraints that should not appear to be covered by the infeasibility exception, the way it's written. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. For questions or comments, Councilmember Lee.
I had a question for Andrea. Do you mind speaking to the question about the infeasibility clause? Is that what it is, infeasibility clause, and how that could protect our affordable housing development or not?
Sure. So the reach code includes an infeasibility exemption, which puts the responsibility on the applicant to prove that, for whatever reason, they are unable to meet the requirement of the reach code. And so it is there for projects that find that it is too onerous or too difficult to meet the reach code. But we definitely hope it is not widely used because we did analyze the reach code to determine its cost effectiveness and impact on our stakeholders. Oh, sorry, you're on...
You're muted.
So, because I think, you know, all of us on the council, we care very deeply about supporting affordable housing, and we know that there are significant barriers to building it. And I think that we wanted to, on balance, create a strong reach code that wouldn't, you know, that wouldn't create an unnecessary barrier to actually doing the developments. So, you know, what is that? Do you feel like we're, I mean, are we, what's your take on this? Are we overreaching here necessarily if the infeasibility code is already there?
So, right, so I guess, so you want to compare whether or not we should include an exception as part of the reach code versus relying on the infeasibility exemption? Okay, so it, yeah, basically, the infeasibility exemption does allow for a project to not meet the requirements of the reach code, but it would put the responsibility on that applicant. Whereas if a, by having the exception, a 100% affordable housing project could continue to build an all-electric building if they, if that made more of, if that was their plan and then not have to worry about meeting the... if that was their plan and then not have to worry about meeting the reach code requirement.
Wait, so, sorry, say that again. Did everyone understand that? So, so you're saying that, that, I don't think, I wasn't following.
Okay.
I can jump in if that might help. So I think the public comment sort of put the issue in better perspective. So the infeasibility exemption is really like if it's just not possible because of site constraints. Whereas, you know, for affordable housing where the financing is very complicated, sometimes something that can cause, what, for a private development may be a minor increase, it's not possible to find financing for, for an affordable housing project. So it just provides them with more flexibility if, for whatever reason, it's not financially feasible on that particular affordable housing site.
Okay.
Because they have more constraints on their financing.
Okay, so the infeasibility code is restricted to the site constraints and not the financing constraints? Is that correct? So we're trying to solve for the financing constraints?
The infeasibility would allow, something was going to like double the cost of a private development and that would be deemed infeasible, but for an affordable housing, a more subtle increase in financing could really torpedo a whole project.
Okay.
Could I, please, Mr. Mayor? To the mayor?
Rick, I'm the one that was muted. Sorry about that. You had your hand up. Go ahead, Rick.
Sure, thank you. Let me first just address the question of the infeasibility study. Anybody who is looking at building an ADU or any other kind of building and they're running up against a question about feasibility, they're having difficulties, maybe it's unaffordable, maybe there are some site restrictions, whatever. There is a consultant that is on the payroll at Peninsula Clean Energy whose job it is to address this and help people work through these questions. Also, there are many different ways that other jurisdictions have dealt with this. For instance, in San Jose, they set a threshold. They said that if a building has a threshold, they set a threshold of $400 per unit in increased cost. If it goes beyond that, then you get an exemption. Say, so, I mean, this is actually pretty doable in the construction world. If you're building an ADU or if you're building a hospital, $400 is not that much money. Okay? Now, I want to go back to natural gas because I was really stricken today when I read earlier what the gentleman said, Mr. Nagel from Mountain View, that children who live in a home where cooking with gas is done are 40%, more than 40%, likely to get, to come down with asthma, contract asthma, right? That and the fact that we're currently living through in our time, in our lives, the worst ever climate hardships, difficult, I mean, you know, freaky thunderstorms, rising seas, fires, droughts, floods. I don't think we have the luxury of trying to figure out how we can let people out of doing what we have to do for the future. These young people that call who are just in high school or just getting out, they're telling us they don't want to live in this world. For me, it's a very simple choice. It's option two and it's no exceptions, okay? We let people, we give them the contact for the consultant to help them with the infeasibility exception, as you say. Because we have to encourage everybody to do the most they can do. And I think we're all very comfortable with the way we think, you know, things are supposed to be, but the world has changed. It's not going to be the way it's supposed to be anymore. We're experiencing discomfort and we shouldn't pretend that it's just going to go away. I used to live in San Bruno where that explosion destroyed 38 homes. I used to walk on that street every morning on my way to school, right there where it blew up. I do not see, another thing, you hear about gas filling up buildings and then blowing them up. Entire brick multi-family buildings have blown up, okay? Additionally, if you're living with all those pollutants in your home, I mean, it's, it's, gas will fill up your, I mean, I'm going to stop.
You brought up, you brought up some really good points, Rick. I think one of the things, you brought up PCE, which is a great point. I think really everybody needs a history lesson on the history of energy, the history of clean energy, the history of cheap energy. So natural gas, I think, in many places like the UK was brought in because it was much cleaner than the town gas that they had from coal and much safer for that reason. In the United States, we've tried to go to natural gas because it was much cleaner than other types of fuels that were being used at the time, burning coal and other things. But we're at a point where cleaner energy is safer and cheaper. And the way economists talk about curbing behavior with nudging people in the right direction, we're at the point where our crisis with the environment is such that we have to forcibly, violently shove people in the right direction. And at this moment in time, it is cheaper and safer and better for us to push in that all-electric direction. I think that's why we're here tonight.
And we shouldn't put people in all affordable housing in harm's way either. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
So I can't disagree with anything that's been said so far. And I guess, I guess I'm looking for a little bit more information on this is because we, we are in an environmental crisis, but we're also in a housing affordability crisis. And one of the reasons why we are in affordability, a housing affordability crisis is because it's just so costly to build. And when we're talking about 100% affordable buildings, and those are the types of buildings we want. So I guess I'm looking for a little bit more information. I guess a little bit of assurances that, that this, that the steps that we're, we're going towards right now in this discussion is not going to prevent 100% affordable buildings from being built here in San Mateo. Can anybody speak to that?
Mid-Penn's already building 100% affordable, right?
But wait, 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 we were, we own that land and we, and we were the ones that said we really want that to have happened. So I think that's a unique situation.
We contributed $12.5 million to that project.
Yeah, I mean, so we had a lot of influence on that. And I'm not saying that it would never happen. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying I'm an expert in this. I just want to make sure that the reason housing is so expensive is because we keep adding fees, we keep adding this, we require union labor, we have all these, these things, requirements that we feel very strongly about. At some point, we need to think about, are we actually going to stop people from being housed here in the city? So I'm not, I can, I'm, I haven't made up my mind here, but I guess I'm looking for some assurances that that we're not going to prevent the building of affordable housing here in San Mateo because of what the actions we're going towards right now.
The vast building, all that, 971, 70 units.
I just have a quick question.
Please.
It's unclear to me, who is it that decides that something is infeasible? It would be the city ultimately, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I'm just wondering if there might be some criteria that we would like to create to define, I'm just thinking out loud here and I'm not married one way or the other, but I'm just thinking, is there some criteria that we would like to define as infeasible?
And that is laid out in the exemption. Yeah, so we, we do have in the infeasibility exemption section, which is 2324050 in ordinance number two, that infeasibility includes, but is not limited to the following, a lack of commercially available materials and technologies to comply with the requirements in the chapter. And applying, that applying the chapter would effectuate an unconstitutional taking of property or otherwise have an unconstitutional application to the property.
Those are pretty high thresholds.
They are very high thresholds. They, but it does leave it open. And, but it is the building official or designated that makes the decision on infeasibility.
And none of the cities have done it, right?
Is there any way we could adopt a, for 100% affordable buildings, a electric preferred approach? Where there's, there's incentive there, but we're not mandating it if that, if, if they can't get, if they can't reach that, that high exemption threshold?
Yes, we could, we could shape the ordinance so that it follows our electric preferred approach for 100% affordable housing.
Could we do that in a way where they have to demonstrate that they actually can't afford to go all electric?
Seems to defeat the purpose, I think.
Yeah, I'm, I'm having trouble trying to find that, that, how we would structure that ordinance.
Well, because we're talking about cost, they're all affordable, right? So if they're going to say, well, we can't afford it, shouldn't they have to show they can't afford it? I mean, with some
Well, I don't think it's, they can't afford it. There, it would be more, for whatever reason, they, they would prefer to build it with gas and take the penalty hit of the preferred clause, whatever that is. But it's not, they can't afford it. Which would be the exemption. So that would be going back to the exemption as far as I see it. I, I mean, I, I just, can you imagine that we're enacting something right now that could prevent one big building of 100% affordable housing for in our, in our city? That's the only thing I just want to make sure that we're not doing here. I mean, and that might be a groundless fear, but they, all these fees that we add on, they, they add up.
Well, could I comment? I, I have to say, I don't think we would be the first. We wouldn't be the last. This is something that is happening because it needs to be done. And once the bar gets raised across the board, then what, if we're the only one that says you can build it any way you want, when we could or should do better, it just doesn't make sense to me.
But we're not setting this in stone right now. We're going to review this in three years, right? Or we can change it anytime we want.
That is true. This would have to be revisited.
And we also probably won't have an all affordable building for at least that long either, again.
Well, one might be proposed or they might be thinking about it. That's how long these things take.
I think if, if we get another 100% affordable building proposed in San Mateo, I, I'd hate to lose that building based on slight, the increasing cost over, over gas. So I'd at least like that conversation to be had. And if that building gets proposed in San Mateo and we can put it over the top by helping them to make all-electric more affordable, then we would obviously make that choice. But let's, let's have that be a conversation that is allowed rather than a building that doesn't get proposed because they don't think that they can make it pencil out financially. I think that's the point you're making, right, Eric? Okay.
It would be, it would be incentive based for 100% affordable, correct?
Yeah, yeah. So we're, we're basically adopting a modified number two where the 100% affordable is is more of the hybrid.
The incentive.
The incentive base. Do you like that, Diane?
Some flexibility at that point.
Okay. Eric, would you like that to be your motion?
Sure. I don't care whose motion it is. I just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Rick.
There are other building types exempted, including retail building, which would be new buildings.
So
has nothing to do with all these standing buildings in, in, you know, downtowns or wherever. Industrial buildings and hospitals, right?
No, I'm sorry, Rick, to clarify, the, the two ordinances only addressed new residential construction and new office buildings. Why don't I put the
What I'm saying, why shouldn't we seek to include those buildings also? If it's infeasible for them because they can't get equipment that'll do, meet their needs, then, then we should, you know, grant them then the ability to use gas if they need.
So I don't think we've studied that at all yet. I think you're talking about a a different ordinance, the way Andrea is describing it. Andrea, you're
That's correct.
I'm just asking why we can't include these other building types. Because they use a lot of gas too. And if they can, if they're being built new and if they can go all-electric, we should require that. But if they have some reason, let's say, for instance, they can't get the equipment that'll meet their needs, right? Then that's an infeasibility and they get an exemption.
I think incrementally, Andrea has brought us an ordinance designed for residential buildings, all, all different forms of residential and
And office.
And office. And going into the realm that you're talking about is, is perhaps a good next step that we want that ordinance to come to us next.
Like, like new retail buildings downtown or mixed-use buildings that have retail. That should definitely be looked at, okay? If restaurants want to have gas, they can, they can lease in a space that's old, it already has gas. They get to keep it, right?
I
Sounds like a future council priority, 2021.
Yeah, and also I have a strong feeling that the city attorney would tell us that because we didn't notice it, we couldn't take action on that tonight anyway.
That's good.
So, so we'll, we'll pick that up and bring it back. Thank you so much, Andrea. I'm going to turn it over to Eric for a motion.
All right. I want to make, we've talked about a lot of things. So I, before I make the formal motion, so what we agreed about, read on, well, it was option number two, but we're saying, and they were keeping the exemption for 100% affordable, however, it's on the electric preferred track instead of just a blanket exemption. Is that what we're talking about?
So I, I need some guidance, I think, from Sean or Kathy about this change because this is, this is adding quite a bit of language that's not currently included in ordinance number two. And so I just want to, you know, make sure we can make this change and be clear.
Let's see, can, can you show us? Is there a slide that goes specifically to the 100%? Or excuse me, to the electric preferred model?
So the electric preferred language was already adopted in 2019. So this would have to be modified to, modified and added to ordinance number two to only impact affordable housing. That's what I'm hearing, correct? Okay, and I just
It would be that you would be exempting 100% affordable from what we adopt today and imposing a, a, the electric preferred reach code to those 100% affordable. So I think you need an exemption into what we're adopting. That's how I would do it. But
And are we saying that it would be, the same would be applied to ADUs?
We didn't exempt ADUs. They would be included in the, they would be included in the all-electric mandate.
Okay, so we, we are, okay, we're taking away that exception from proposed ordinance number two. So basically
Oh, is that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Was that an exception in, in, in number two?
Yes.
Oh, forgive me. Okay, sorry.
I'm going to get involved then. I thought you were just exempting the one and it was already in there.
Well, I was saying that if we're creating an electric preferred for affordable housing, then maybe we could apply the same preference for, for ADUs and keep eyes on it. And revisit it.
I could go either way on there. My main, my main concern was the 100% affordable building, but
Is there, let's, let's pause for just a moment and let's bring up that question. So ADUs can have an exemption, ADUs can have a, an all-electric preference, or ADUs could be mandated to go all-electric. I would say that those are the three options.
I recommend all-electric.
Yeah, I would, I would say all, all-electric also because we know that it is more, it is actually more cost effective. It's not a matter of perception where it, building an ADU, you don't have the same kind of financing constraints. And now we have, we have the, these kind of financing products through the credit union. So I don't know if it's a real barrier or just a perceived barrier. And if it's, if it's only perceived, then I would be in favor of going all-electric.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to go along with that too. So
Okay.
Eric, Eric, I think we're ready for a motion and I'm going to try, you tell me if this is going to be your motion, but we're not going to exempt ADUs from ordinance number two. And with regards to the exception for 100% affordable housing, we're still going to have an all-electric preference for the 100% affordable housing. But we will be flexible if, if it is not feasible for them from a cost perspective. Is that, does that articulate what you want? Yes? Okay. So that is Eric's motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. We have motion and second. Madam Clerk, would you call, roll on that motion? Is there any clarification that's needed on that motion from Andrea or Kathy? Or Sean?
I, I do want to just, for Andrea's comfort, to say that I believe that we can make these amendments to the that was on, that was proposed in time for the second reading.
Okay.
Yeah, great. I appreciate that.
Matter of who it applies to.
Very good.
That's okay, Sean, too. I just want to hear yes from you.
That was
Yes, yes.
That was a very healthy discussion and I appreciate it. We got good public comment. We have a motion, we have a second. And Madam Clerk, the motion was Eric's and the second was Councilmember Lee, Deputy Mayor and Councilmember Lee.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen.
Aye.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Aye.
Mayor Gogol.
Aye. Excellent. Thank you so much, Andrea and Kathy. And that is our final item for the night. Reports and announcements, anyone? Reports and announcements?
Answer the census, answer the census, answer the census.
Answer the census for sure. And great for all those who came out for the, for the, for the parade. I have yes, Councilmember Lee?
Oh, no, go ahead.
I was gonna, well, we're going to adjourn in honor of
I was going to just say that, um, you know, our task force for the, the Age Friendly Cities Initiative worked very, very hard and, and that grant proposal was, was stellar and they, and their, their top priority was actually pedestrian safety. And, and so as we go through the next, you know, the next iteration of synthesizing our master plans and also, you know, thinking forward to the general plan, I think that there's a real opportunity to, to wed the, their work in, in integrated into our pedestrian, broader pedestrian safety initiatives. And, and I would also really love to see some communication about, about this with, you know, from the city just acknowledging that all the, all the time and effort that went into, into those ideas. And, and I think there actually might be some interesting spinoff ideas about how to make businesses more age friendly. And I know that Chamber has been talking to some of the task force members about, about that as well. So this is something, you know, that I hope we can, we can communicate broadly and acknowledge is happening. And then also make it an integrated part of our, our planning.
Rick?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to go back to what John Ford spoke to us about at the beginning of the meeting, which is the
Commute.org.
Cut the commute pledge, right? So this is a pledge that businesses or jurisdictions like the city of San Mateo can sign onto. We can make the pledge. So I spoke with Drew about it. He says he's interested in looking at it, thinks he might be able to do it. I know we can't do much here right now, but I would like to see if we could at least authorize him to take a look at the pledge. I sent it to him so he could look at it. And if he finds that it's feasible to do with our staff, then authorize him to go ahead and sign the pledge.
I think Drew secretly signed the pledge already and he's been implementing it behind our backs.
Yeah, well, we needed to go a little farther than that, but yes. So that would be what I asked though.
Sounds good.
Just a clarification from Brown Act perspective, you'd be authorizing him to look at it and then bring it back for council action on a future agenda.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sean.
What he said.
Yeah.
Okay, I've got two final quick things. I'm going to go as fast as I can. Today is September 21st, 2020. It would be my dad's 70th birthday. Happy birthday to my dad.
Today is my daughter's birthday.
That's awesome.
There you have it. The day I became a mother. Okay.
Very important, very important people, very important days. Missing him today, as always. Happy birthday. But I also want to adjourn in memory of the Titan. The heavyweight. We are honoring the memory and celebrating the life of Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Her, her decisions as a, as a justice were legendary. Her life as a role model has been incredible for all women out there, for anyone who fights injustice and adversity. And her legacy to us is that all of us have to step up and fight and, and and do what is needed when it's not popular, when we're the minority opinion. Minority opinions matter. Minority opinions matter a great deal. So if you would join me in a brief moment of silence for the notorious RBG, please. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.